All right. A call to order tonight's regular meeting of the CUST 201 Board of Education, June 16th, 2020, enroll call please.
Mr. Price? This is Stromeyer.
Here.
Ms. Wilson? This is Charlton.
Here.
Mr. Armstrong?
Here.
This is Coyle.
Here.
If we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, before we get started, just a couple of technical procedural things. We got an email this week from our attorneys. They're saying that there's new legislation that when a board is not is doing any kind of remote meetings, that every vote has to be done with a roll call. So we will be doing that for every vote, even the ones that we haven't done in the past. And just so everybody knows, some people, some board members are here in the room. And well, Dana and Laura are not in the room. There's via Zoom. Everyone else is here in at South School, so. And we have a lot of things on the agenda, a lot of things to talk about. So let's make sure that, I don't know what we want to do, raise a hand to talk just so that we're not talking over each other or something. So just a suggestion, so. Okay, so approval of minutes. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the May 12th, 2020, regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented. So moved.
Second.
Roll call please.
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
This Stromeyer?
Yes.
Yes.
This is Charlton?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the closed session of the May 12th, 2020, regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
This Stromeyer?
So moved.
I know, I know. Okay, so what?
Second.
Okay. Roll call.
All right, now roll call. This Stromeyer?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
This Charlton?
Yes.
This Armstrong?
Yes.
This Coyle?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, are there any public comments? Do you have anything?
Yes.
Do you want to do, we have two spots. You want to do that now?
Yeah.
Okay.
We do not. So well, first, before I get to public comment, one other thing that the Board is aware of is that John Rudy resigned unexpectedly yesterday or Sunday and personal reasons. And so we will be following our Board policy and Board rate for policy 70. And so we will be publicizing that opening. We'll accept applications. We gone through this process a couple of times, so we'll follow that same process. And then at some point in time, some applicants will be invited into the board that take place in closed session. And then the Board will reach and assess who they want to fill the remainder of John's tenure. So we will be posting that and making a community work of that.
Kevin, that just goes to the next election cycle, correct?
Correct. Correct.
I just want to say-
Till 2021.
Till, yes, till that, till that next.
So that'll be.
It'll be like a three-year seat then?
Yeah, he was a four, he was a four-year-
Two years remaining on his term.
Okay.
Yep. He was a four-year term, right?
He was a four-year term. So, and we have to fill that, I don't have that in front of me, within, is it 45, 35 days? Oh, 60, okay, okay. But you'll be sending out that information, okay. I just want to just say I wish John well and thank you, thank you to him for his service on the Board of Education. Okay, sorry, I forgot we talked about that. Okay, now, public comments.
Other public comments, we received one from Liz Rattler. Liz wrote, I Kevin, I don't think this is actually a public comment, but more of a question about how schools are planning to-
Kevin?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Kevin, I'm having a hard time hearing you.
All right. Can you hear me now?
That's better, yes, thank you.
I'll hold it up here. Let's see, I don't think this is actually a public comment, but more of a question of how schools are planning for possible e-learning fall. If we go back, I read that in a district survey, parents regarding options, there's two, one thought of that. I know many had various opinions on remote learning, my Jack, WHS Soon B Junior really had no issues. He was able to challenge the teacher for a multiple part availability, which was incredible, but communication for parents and students now available. This is still a star for me. I did not hear it from other teachers, but he did not fall behind in his grades or A's and B's. Cooper, Cooper struggled with a lot of work. There was not a lot of work given, very low communication, teaching for less available. Kid who needs needs to socialize at school and needs to be challenged by someone besides the parent. And seventh grade with high honors, but he said he wished he had warrants. School first started in Indiana, was usually done by 10:30 while Jack was done before 1:30. I recognize this end of year without a deal, but there is a community parents help, you know, I'm happy with it.
You're on mute.
There we go. All right, some kind of plan. Thank you for all that you do, it is most appreciated. And then we've got a couple others. Melanie Sleeper. Dear School Board Members, I'm writing a response to the meeting minutes for this evening's School Board meeting. I read that there will be resignations this and subsequent elections. I was to believe that any position vacated by the Board was to be announced publicly and then an election to follow. I am hoping for clarification on how there can be such a rule that doesn't allow for public information to get shared until the day of said vacancies and how election can transpire all within one meeting and the public not be aware of it. This topic has not been discussed publicly and therefore should be discussed out in the open before. What I feel is the bait and switch, i.e. election of new officers without public comment. I've always been proud of the transparency of our School Board and now fearing that this is not actually the case. I would truly appreciate more transparency on how this came about, as well as how it's possible to have not known about this until the agenda was published. Please feel free to kind of correct any mistakes in my understanding of this topic. And then we have Jill Ron. Dear District 201 Board, I see the board reorganization on the agenda. I would like to single out the three long-term Board members, Marie, Gary and Joel, who are retiring in the spring. Due to your determination and dedication, District 201 is at the top. Before you came, its ranking was very low. You've worked so hard to provide excellence in education, extracurricular activities for our kids. You proved our kids in Westmont are achievers. Our pride and property values have gone up substantially too. As you prepare to retire, I hope you will respectfully work together to assist the Board and continue with this excellence. Each of you has made special contributions and the next Board needs your collective expertise. We're all, you were all elected to serve until next spring. Please go out as strong and professionally as you came in, each of you is needed. Again, thanks. Your achievements in building District 201 is, to what it is today, has my admiration forever. Jill Ron. And then Amy Rhodey. It appears that there is a lot of reorganization. The scoreboard has happened this evening. Why was this never announced to the public prior to this meeting? It seems that we should have some input. And that's what we have for public comments.
Okay. Thank you.
Marie, can I make a comment? I know we're not, I'm not going to address the public comments in any way. But I would like, for the next couple meetings, if we could discuss a new procedure on how we respond to public comment. That's just a request I have at the next meeting.
Sure. Okay, was that, that was it Dana? Okay. Then the consent agenda. The Chair, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Number one, personnel recommendations, employment of licensed staff. Courtney Templeton, point four. FTE English teacher, Westmont High School. Mary Powell, 1.0 FTE Elementary Teacher, Manning School Elementary. Megan Kirkwood, point five FTE Art Teacher, Westmont Junior High School. Andrea Left, 1.0 FTE Dual Language Teacher, Westmont Junior High School. Number two, renewal of student accident insurance. Three, approval of towel service. Four, approval of board travel expenses. Five, approval of additional May 2020 expenditure report. Six, approval of June 2020 expenditure report. Seven, ratification of May 2020 regular payroll. Eight, appointment of school treasurer. Nine, resolution to abate working cash funds. Can I get a-
So moved.
Second.
And roll call please.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
This is Charlton?
Yes.
Mr. Armstrong?
Yes.
This is Coyle?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy? I'm sorry. This is Stromeyer. Didn't want that one out. Thank you.
Okay, welcome to the district, to our new staff. Okay, the first item for information or discussion is update on elementary standards-based grading and report card.
And we have with us, they joined us. We have Tim Wyler, Nadine Norris, Lindsay Petersack and Sandy Moyer. So that they, we'll go through the information with the Board and then we'll be available to answer your questions. So who's taking the lead?
Tim, I'm gonna take the lead and then if you don't mind letting me present, or if you want to drive the presentation, there's just 10 slides. But if you want to give me permission, I could, I could drive that for the time being.
Um, let me see if I can. I don't know how you. I think I'm gonna have to do it, Tim.
Yeah, okay.
I don't see where I can allow you to share your screen.
It might be down near the screen, share screen, and then instead of the host just allowing, you could allow anyone that's in the meeting to, to share it.
All right, I just did that.
You did. Yes, you did. I got access. All right, let me open it up.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Okay. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for letting us join you in the, the June Board meeting. I am joined by Ms. Moyer and Mrs. Petersack. And we'll be taking turns kind of going over an update on standards-based grading. And then how, and a little bit on how the end of the year went with our professional development to really plan for next year. Because we kind of know a lot more about being in the same situation. So thank you for giving us a platform today to, to share the information with you. So I am sharing my screen, so I'll drive while everyone goes through, but can you see the topics to review, the first? Actually, that's the second slide. The first one should be standards-based grading and student feedback systems. So one thing we figured out over the course of the, of this year, working with, even before COVID-19 hit, is that feedback is the key to really good communication with families, with teachers and with students. So a lot of what we did over the course of the year stemmed through, stemmed from giving really solid feedback and more accurate feedback as we move through our school year. So we started with really developing what we felt was a better reporting system to, to families. And we, we piloted for the last two years, a way to communicate how kids are doing at each grade level, connecting to the standard. So we're just going to give an update on, on why we shifted to a standards-based report card. Because before we had an A, B, C, D, F system at the upper grades and then a meets or not meet system at the lower grades. So we kind of went all in on more of the standards-based reporting, which was more aligned with what we did in the, in the younger grades. We're going to walk you through what we did over the last school year, just as an update. Whoops. We're gonna talk a little bit about what next year, what we would like next year to look like and how Otis is really going to help us provide that crucial feedback to our families, to our students and to our, our teachers as PLCs as we move into a higher level of learning and instructing and facilitating. And then how we used our professional development time that last week of school, which it was very awesome to plan for full days of learning for our teachers, which it was a very daunting task. But I think at the end of that last day on Friday, it was well worth it and everyone took advantage of all the time we put into developing a plan to be, really be ready for next year, whether we're in our traditional school day, or if we are in some modified hybrid version, or if students are at home learning. So we don't really know what that looks like right now, but we are ready and prepared for whatever situation at the elementary level. So thank you for allowing us to do some really rich PD at the end of the school year. So why we shifted to standards-based grading, a lot of it has to do with the feedback that we provide our students. And if we provide our students with really sound feedback, then it correlates with parents understanding what they can do to help and assist in the content that we provide at, in all classrooms at school. We definitely felt the need to separate academics from learner habits. And so we did do that. If, if I could, I'm gonna exit this real quick to kind of show you. One, one thing we added on the report card. If you have a fourth grader, I'm just going to use fourth grade as an example, but we had not only social emotional learning, we added some components for the SEL, which is going to play a huge role in this next school year in terms of what our students, how are they feeling, how they're going to be ready for learning. It, it's, we've already identified that that plays a huge role before our stay at home. And it's, it's going to play even a bigger role next year as we get kids that have been at home for months and months without being in the school situation. So we're going to dive in deeper to the social emotional learning. But the learner qualities, which the teachers helped to develop, which was divide, you know, instead of giving a grade on how students follow directions, do they transition properly? Do they use feedback to enhance their learning? We wanted to separate these on the reporting system to better communicate that with families. And so the, the system we use this year was if they were meeting, if they're working towards, or if they were not meeting, or it was something that was rarely developed in those students, and then we would use these as building goals with students on an individual basis. So this would be an example of a fourth grade report card for that purpose. So just to give you a little example of why we separated all the standard down at the bottom. But this would be an example of, of the report card that we do in fact use. And we're building on as teachers build their proficiency in that as well. And then one of the main things that has helped our district is that both buildings have a greater alignment. We always, we always try to really support the teachers in both buildings and making sure we are in alignment from grade level to grade level, teacher to teacher. And this has allowed us to have even deeper conversations on meeting those consistencies and fidelity, you know, each grade teaching with fidelity. So it just has helped us in terms of shifting our standards-based grading to align with a greater fidelity in each classroom, whether a fourth grader is at Miller or Manning, you know, outside of the dual language program, which has a couple different components. But we're definitely teaching and addressing the same standards in both buildings. And then what we did, so a year ago, almost to the day, we presented on what we want next year to look like. And I just, this is kind of just holding us accountable for what we said we were going to do. In 2019, 20, we finalized a report card that we shared with the Board, the parents, the students, the teachers. Teachers had a lot of input in terms of what that looked like. We shared within the first couple of weeks of school, we shared a rubric that each family had to identify what a meets was in a standard, to what a working towards was in a standard, to what a not meets was. So a very easy scale. Not easy in terms of like, you know, getting all 50 standards thrown at you in the first two weeks of school. But as we build our proficiency, that rubric scale is going to really pay dividends because things are going to be very transparent in the front end as families are going to know, okay, here's what third grade looks like. Here are all the standards. Here's what a meets looks like, and this is what I'm going to do to help my child. And then the really big thing that Ms. Moyer and the dual language team has stepped up and really created was a Spanish component, so we measure our dual language classrooms. And what we did this past year was we simply took our 17 language arts standards in English, and then we were able to transfer those same 17 standards, modify them for the Spanish components, and then our, our dual language teachers were able to measure the Spanish components of our language arts as well. So those were the three things that we said last year we were going to do. We did them. We are definitely making some tweaks and modifications. But our teachers are a huge part of what that looks like, and we met with them over the last two weeks of school to make sure if there were some things that they wanted to see different, their input was taken and we're going to modify those for the start of the year. At the end of the year reflection review, we updated and edited standards with each grade level and each department. So they had input, we took notes, and over the summer, Mrs. Petersack, Mrs. Moyer, myself and Ms. Billy and a couple other teammates are going to be making those changes to the report card, the curriculum maps. And so they're ready to go for the start of the school year. And then providing more detailed and specific feedback on professional development. And as it relates to giving students feedback, so they can be in, more in charge of their learning, whether they're in kindergarten, fifth grade, they'll be able to better track where they are and where they need to go. And I, we field the standards-based report card, the feedback and the tools we use like Otis. And the assessments are going to help drive that, that piece. And then I'm gonna, if I can, if Ms. Petersack's ready, she's going to take over from the next slide, which is what parents and students can expect for the 2021 school year.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm on a, on two systems at once, I apologize. In a minute, yes. So really what we did, as Tim was talking about at the end of the year, is prepare, even given COVID, what the 2020, 21 school year will look like, regardless of what our learning looks like in the fall. So based on teacher and parent feedback, one of the first things that we actually started doing second semester, but we talked about doing cohesively as a K5 building, is sending home the unit assessments for ELA and math. The reason this was such a big discussion is because our teams of teachers worked really hard in the creation, specifically with math, as we pulled questions together ourselves. And so we want to keep the fidelity of those assessments. ELA was used more straight out of the curriculum. However, we felt it was really helpful in communicating with parents what it looks like if a student met or did not meet a standard by being able to see those questions and the student work. So that's something we are going to be cohesively doing for the fall. Tim alluded a little bit to the ongoing feedback provided in Otis. There are many different ways that Otis provides ongoing communication, not just at a report card time for parents and for students. There's a little caveat, we've been looking at the feedback from our younger learners. And specifically with remote learning, there is a tool that might be a little bit more friendly. And that is CSO is a way to provide feedback. So we've just put a little asterisk in there. However, the reporting and the overall feedback of the report cards from the quarter would still come from Otis. Another aspect of Otis that we had been looking at doing is a more of a three-year rollout. And because of remote learning, we've, we've fast forwarded, and I think it is a positive that our report cards, what teachers and parents can see in real time, day to day, also allows us to print the report card directly from Otis. So as they, we provide professional, or tutorials for parents on how to read what Otis looks like in terms of reporting, that the report card would then come directly from there as well. So that language is common for parents and they begin to understand when we are measuring progress and providing evidence, what does that evidence mean with Otis language? And then the final thing that is on a pause right now because Otis is doing an update that is supposed to be released on July 15th, as of right now, we would like to provide tutorials ongoing for parents. We've done live formats, but also recorded, so that parents can learn how to navigate the system with regards to a lot of the features that it provides, but specifically with looking at the progress of students within specific standards. So that's that slide, Tim. And then how does, how did Otis help us and how will it help us continuing and moving forward? So the one thing that was really powerful that we used our PLC time for was that grade levels were able to provide consistent evidence, regardless of the classroom, Manning or Miller, or even within, you know, Manning having several teachers, for example, that their data points that they used for evidence of progress was calibrated among teachers and consistent among the grade level. The other great thing that we were piloting and then kind of thrust it forward to in the remote learning was that it is very live in terms of a grade book. So as soon as teachers are inputting that information, that parents and students can view that information on their end. This is something that's going to take time to share with teachers how to input that in a consistent way and format, because that's something new, especially for K4. I know fifth grade has used Skyward as a grade book before. So we will communicate with parents of what that will look like. But it is a open communicative, two-way tool for both parents and teachers throughout the grading period. So rather than waiting for a progress report or for a report card, they can get weekly, monthly feedback that's ongoing. And then one thing that we wanted to highlight, which has been very tricky in the conversation about Otis, is that Otis as a system is a learning management system. It is, it is very robust with lots of features. We were only piloting the grading portion of that, which actually wasn't live to parents this year until COVID hit. It helped us in the long run because we were able to use it as a remote learning tool to provide online resources. But there are different portals that we want to make sure we're clear with parents of understanding the difference between the reporting side and the online learning side, which are very different, especially for elementary, where we know and have learned that remote learning is hard for all kids, but especially for elementary students who haven't yet been online before in the ways that junior high and high school students may have that. I think that's it for me, so I'm going to pass it on to Sandy, who's going to talk a little bit about the, some of the professional development that we provided teachers and that teachers gave to their peers throughout those last four days of professional development.
Thank you, Lindsay. We were so amazed with what our teachers were able not only to receive, but to truly lead throughout the week of the 26th to the 29th. We wanted to give the teachers opportunities to continue to develop their understanding on how to continue their knowledge of standard-based grading, and specifically on how to collect feedback and truly under, getting that big scope of assessing standards in their entirety. And so we wanted teachers to have the proper tools to be ordered to collect student feedback in order to assess those standards that are on the standards-based report. The end of the year PD had a couple of focuses and you can see on the screen that we had four main ones. The first one is creating simple assessments with rubrics. And we wanted our teachers, our staff to know this through Otis. And then with that as well, take it a little bit deeper, is how to create those advanced assessments on Otis. How to allow students to be more, and their responses more creative. And we also wanted our student, our teachers to have quality instruction to teach standards to benefit our students. And last, but we, and last but not least, we wanted our students to get that, parents, I'm sorry, our teachers to get student feedback through Otis and to CISA and through CSO, so that parents can have a clear understanding of what teachers are assessing and what students are learning. So those were our main focuses for the last week of school. We wanted to also collect the feedback of our teachers. And there were three questions that we asked daily as our teachers were navigating the professional development. The first question was, how will they use the new knowledge and skills in their practice? The second was, how, what do they need to continue to learn, to continue to provide high-quality instruction? And then the last one question was, what did they learn about themselves as a, as a teacher, as a facility? And then the last one question was, what did they learn about themselves as a as a teacher, as a facilitator through this week of professional development? And looking at the data and the responses, we were able to um see through three big themes. And the first theme was uh the answers were all about student engagement. And so we were able to read teachers' comments and feedback to us saying how that throughout the PD they have were learning how to use different methods to keep students engaged. That they also were able to see different types of resources so that they can provide high-quality strategies for all their students. And one of the most amazing parts about this is that we got to see our teachers become those facilitators amongst their staff. They were also leading PD for each other, which was a great thing to see. Um and then we also got to hear back about how they felt about about creating assessments, which was and are one of our main focuses for the PD. Um couple of teachers said that they learned how to develop meaningful assessments, how to provide quality feedback. Um especially through, you know, Otis and 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 through technology, which was something that we wanted our our staff to truly um learn. And they also talked about how they were able to create uh more assessments in Otis, simple and advanced. And how to uh truly use all the features that a platform like Otis has, like audio and sorting, those advanced features. So those were really great things to see. And then the last theme was, which is on the next slide. Collaboration. Uh and that was one another theme that throughout the feedback, we were reading that all of our teachers were saying that there was always room for improvement, new ways to do things, but they were truly impressed how they can learn from their colleagues. Uh you can see some of their comments on the screen, cause you know, one of our teachers said collaboration with my colleagues is key. And um truly just understanding how working together um and truly focusing on best practices is gonna help all of our students. And so throughout the throughout this data that we received from them, this feedback that we received from them, we were we were truly happy to to know that our teachers truly benefited from this PD, which in turn um truly supports our standard-based grading because we really want our teachers to collaborate together to build and continue to assess uh those big standards that we have on our standard-based grading. We want them um to keep our students engaged so that our students can progress through the needs and working towards and needing. And so these three big themes that we got to hear back from our teachers truly supported the work that we have been doing throughout the last couple of years to get to where we are when it comes to standards-based grading. So this is a little bit of what um where we're at and what the teachers feel. Now we would like to take questions from any of you. Uh about any anything regarding standard-based grading.
I can start. So I had a more of just just trying to process. Am I, can I ask a question?
Tim, do you wanna um unshare?
Yeah, I did.
Okay. Um I wanted to just clarify from a lay perspective, as a parent who is not an educator, doesn't have a background in education, kind of process some of the information that I heard and make sure I understood it correctly. So one of the things I know as a parent is that the older grades use something called Skyword. So you can see if your child is doing their homework or not doing their homework, how they scored on their last test. And it's sounds like Otis will be be able to provide that for our elementary students. So that where maybe they, parents in the past haven't had a tool to check to see if students are turning in their homework, that they will be able to do that starting next year. Is that correct?
Sort of. I think there's a very big difference in philosophy of elementary and the research that's out there versus junior high and high school. So we just wanna be careful with the word homework uh because that can often be misinterpreted. Um a- and what our focus is, is when students are um showing their mastery or near mastery or their progress towards is towards a standard, we're documenting that and this is the evidence to do that. So it's a little bit different language, um and there are different characteristics. So when Tim was pointing out the learner habits versus the skill of, let's say, um being able to to know all of your ABCs if we're going to a kindergarten standard, that those are not um coupled together where it can be confusing if it's effort versus skill, that we're really looking at each of those specifically and separately.
No one else has, I'll answer as my second question, I'm sorry. One one thing that always cause gives me pause is the word assessment. So assessments may mean something very different in my ear than coming from your mouth. So assessments in my ear mean more testing. And and as a parent, I don't want more testing. I want more our teachers to have more time to educate and teach and individualize. So I can you clarify what you mean when you mean assessments in Otis?
So Otis, and I personally have had many um debated conversations about the word assessment, which they understand. When you actually go in to enter data as a teacher, under assessment, there is a broad list, a very long list of options. Could be anything from an observation, it could be other, it could be a checklist, it could be a rubric, there are lots of different options. They use the term assessment um because you, in a way, you are looking at their understanding of a standard. So I understand their philosophy of that, but I do think from the parent and student lens, it can be confusing. Um but there are lots of options that allow us to look beyond a multiple choice or a paper pencil kind of assessment. We really like to use the word data points that each, what parents are gonna be seeing is a point in time. Whether it is a question, um a part of a rubric, maybe it's a one-on-one reteaching that a teacher was able to do with student or a small group of students where they were able to to see a student's progress and understanding of a standard. So there's lots of options that are there.
Can I just add something to to Ms. Peter's comment? Uh I think also as well assessment um for our teachers means in a way that students truly understand their learning. So when they, when students are taking an assessment, they're not taking, they're not thinking necessarily paper and then hands-on a paper type of test other, but they're thinking more of how can I show that I'm growing in my learning? Um so it could be also that um assessment where students are showing their work in various forms, as Ms. Peters that mentioned. And it's kind of like that two-way communication between the student and the teacher of where they're at and what they need to continue to do to get to the next level.
So as far as um additional professional development that might be needed or additional training, how is that gonna be covered?
Uh with respect to Otis, is that what you mean, Joel?
Yeah, implementation or if, you know, i- if teachers have additional questions, implementing it and that sort of thing.
So we utilize our institute days, our SIP days, our PLC days. Uh before COVID and remote learning, we, that is what we had invested the twenty nineteen twenty twenty school year in. Uh and throughout the year, as teachers provided feedback, we shifted some of our professional development during that time to make sure that teachers have the time to collaborate with their peers, enter, you know, evidence, be able to learn the system. So that will be something that is ongoing. I think also something that we learned from our teachers throughout the conversations is we had set something, some non-negotiables to hold us all accountable um so that we were calibrated and uh consistent across the board. But teachers definitely gave us some feedback uh in terms of how many, for example, how many data points does a certain standard need to show mastery? We had given a a number uh to our staff of four data points, but as we're listening to teachers and they lived through the system, we know that sometimes four data points is not necessary. Uh perfect example, once you know your alphabet, do you need to go back and reassess it because it's a skill used for so many other skills? So that's a part of that ongoing communication with staff uh in our end-of-the-year reflections uh so that we can drive our professional development to help them uh moving forward. So the implementation continues and that frustration level that we all experienced this year and with any learning of a new tool um decreases over time.
I just wanted to add one thing about the professional development and the process that we use if what's really important to understand is is that professional development is ongoing and job embedded and in within the context of the work that we do. So a a really important part of our professional development for all of us, including of myself and principals, as well as the teachers, is the role of the instructional coach. So the instructional coach is is in constant communication with teachers and is is in a way assessing all of us in terms of our skills and our proficiencies. And then she can uh help us fill in those gaps. So Tracy Billy um did a tremendous job of helping teachers move forward and and increase their proficiency, their confidence and their competence with regard to the tools.
And that obviously is gonna be an ongoing thing for the next school year.
Yes.
Thank you.
I just have to say thank you for this um presentation. Um it seems to really have hit the main points. Um obviously, Otis was trial by fire um this year. But I know just from a lot of the elementary school, especially the elementary school parents that I know. It was helpful for them and um hopefully that continues. Okay, and are there any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you very much. Um then we will will move to the next topic, uh presentation of monthly financial statement.
Alright, good evening. The um April twenty twenty financial statements are presented for you. During the month of April, the district received two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars from the state. There are three hundred and eighty-nine thousand of fiscal year twenty payments voucher, but not released at this time. The state owes the district for both the second and third quarter mandated court categoricals. Um and the month of April continued with the stay-at-home order, the shutdown of major sectors of the economy and the operation of only essential services as a result of the COVID nineteen pandemic. Unemployment continues to grow and turmoil in the financial markets existed. And the financial position of the state continues uh to worsen and this causes concern for the impact to the district. On a more positive note, um today we did receive um another um installment of our tax levy. So our collections um for this year are comparable to the prior year. I know there was a lot of concern on my part, especially that we would receive um our tax payments timely and then what that would do to our financial position and would we have to um issue tax anticipation warrants or do a line of credit or things like that. So I'm pleased to say that at this point, we do not have to worry about that. We'll see what happens with the second half of the property tax collections over the next couple months. But for right now, we're in a a favorable position. Um in the education and tort funds, uh revenues are comparable to the prior year averages. We received two hundred and forty-seven thousand of fiscal year twenty payments. Um a hundred and twenty thousand of that was evidence-based funding. And there are a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars worth of uh fiscal year twenty payments voucher, but not released at this time. I mean, I am expecting the state to be paying a little bit more slowly based on the loss of revenues that they've had um because of the pandemic. So again, we'll continue to monitor our cash flow as um the months progress. And the O and M fund revenues are comparable to the prior year average. And in the transportation fund, they are lower than the prior year average, again, based on the timing of state payments. The dis- they, the state owes us for the both the second and third quarter payments. So had they paid that this month, we would be comparable. So there's two hundred and forty-seven thousand of payments that we're still waiting for. And as far as expenditures go in the ed and tort funds, the expenditures are comparable to the prior year average. In the O and M fund, we're sixty-nine point seven-two percent spent to date. We were seventy-one point nine-seven percent spent um at this time last year. And the transportation fund, um expenditures are higher than the prior year averages. Um the timing of receipt of invoices varies from year to year. We did a quick analysis of things and it looks like our um transportation costs for special education and homeless um transportation um was greater than expected. And so uh we can anticipate that our expenditures may exceed um budget in this fund as a result. So and then we'll obviously monitor that um for the next year's budget. And then um if you look at investments, there's a ten point eight million dollars worth of investments in the district right now. And um we'll expect that to go up as we um continue to receive tax revenue. And then um the lunch report and the student activity funds are attached as well as fund balance. Does anybody have questions? Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next item is planning for the twenty twenty dash twenty twenty-one school year.
So with um, you know, the the district's been involved in planning for the next school year. Um if you look at the governor's restore Illinois plan, currently the state is in phase three, which allows for groups of ten. And uh just social distancing is six feet and face coverings. It's anticipated they'll, that Illinois will transition to phase four at the end of the month. And in phase four, gatherings of fifty people or fewer are allowed, face coverings are warranted, social distancing. And this is when schools may open. Um when you look at the current guidelines for phase five, phase five requires uh vaccine available or effective treatment is widely available or no new cases over sustained period. Now, there's there's the possibility that those guidelines could be modified, but at this time, uh looking at what's required for phase five, um we will more than likely be in phase four at the start of the school year. And so our planning's been based around that concept that um those um restrictions that are in place for phase four, that's what we'll be operating under. As we uh put together our committee, the our guiding principles, our our priority is to maintain the health and safety of our students and staff. Provide meaningful and engaging academic experiences for students, address social emotional needs of all students and provide consistency stability for all staff and students. And provide continuous professional learning opportunities for all staff that address learning needs at this time. When you look at what's required of groups of fifty and right now, our understanding is that that means just in one location. So a school could have more than fifty people as long as they're not in one area like the auditorium or a gym. In order to um socially distance at six feet, um you're looking at a classroom needs to be a minimum of seven hundred square feet to nine hundred square feet. And that will allow you twelve students and a teacher. So if you look at our typical size of our classrooms, our classrooms fall in that range. And so you're looking at uh under those guidelines, um twelve students at a time. Uh school buses typically transport about fifty-six students. Um with the current guidelines for social distancing and face coverings, you're looking at twelve riders. In schools, students and staff would have to wear face masks all the time. And um, you know, while ready, we've, Kim and I have been having conversations about, we would be providing you know, two to three masks per student and staff member. Um and additional paper masks for those students who forget those. Um we're looking at student and staff temperature checks. Uh the large communal spaces, so your cafeteria, your gym, your auditorium, you would not be able to use those spaces. And so uh lunch would be in the classroom, you're looking at art on a cart, music on a cart. And the goal would be to try to keep cohorts of students together. And so you can see the challenge of a high school or a junior high when the bell rings. And typically, kids would be moving around the building. And then um, you know, definitely we would have to be doing thorough cleanings of our buildings. And then the other things that we're looking at as well is that we know that um there will be some parents that will not send their children to school. And so does that mean that we need to provide some type of rule, learning experience for those parents or not? You know, we're waiting for guidance on that. Uh some of our staff may have health concerns that will prevent them from returning to work. We know that the last We know that the last 10 weeks was not ideal. And so when those students start in the fall, we may have to take a look at where they're at. And I know Dana, we were talking about assessment. We may be needing to do a little bit of assessing our students to see where they're at and so that we make sure that we pick up where the students are at. And then also, we're also relying on DuPage County Health Department. And so they may have additional guidelines for schools. Currently, we're waiting, the hope was that today, the ISBE would have their guidelines for phase four. That's what we were kind of led to believe, they haven't come out yet. And so we're hoping that there will be some other guidelines or possibly some things that schools will be allowed to do. The other thing that the state board about is working on are guidelines for remote learning 2.0. Because one of the challenges with the last round of remote learning basically was do no harm. And so students could positively impact their grade but not negatively impact their grade. And so that is challenging trying to get some of your less than motivated students to continue working. And there was also some limits to how much time students were allowed to be involved in learning. And so right now, our committee, and we have a cross mix of teachers, certified, non-certified. We're going through that process of, okay, under those constraints, what a day of school would look like? Or if we have to start the school year with remote learning, how do we have to change what we're doing? Or if we need a blend, a hybrid where, you know, some of the students are in the building, some are remote learning. So we're looking at all these different scenarios. But obviously, what's going to be critical for us is what the ISBE provides. And so once we get that, then we'll continue to work our plan. We will be reaching out to our our parents, also getting their input. But right now, it's you're kind of planning for something you're not exactly, you don't exactly know what it's going to look like. So that's a challenge. And so we want to make sure that we have enough flexibility that regardless of what the fall brings, we'll be able to make the necessary adjustments. Any questions?
So Kevin, I do have a question, and it's really more in terms of how we basically set the expectation for parents of when we might know what this looks like. I'm guessing, and I've had it said in my head, that we're not really going to know what the beginning of the fall school session looks like until probably late July, early August. Is that is that fair or do you have a different timeline in mind? Not to commit you to anything, but just kind of manage parents' expectations of when we might have a more finalized plan in place.
Yes, that fits our timeline as well, Laura. And we're thinking towards the end of July, we should be hopefully locked in on what it's going to look like. The other thing that we're looking for from the state is we had tremendous flexibility with the school calendar. And we're hoping for that same type of thing so that either building in additional staff development for teachers or in some cases, some districts have even talked about delaying the start of school. And possibly, we'd have more information, we'd have a better idea of what's going on with the virus. Other districts are looking at the exact opposite, starting earlier, trying to get as many days in if you're anticipating that there's going to be another spike. But definitely by the end of July, Laura, we want to be able to communicate to our parents what we think the beginning of the year will be.
Thank you.
Hey, but just one quick question. Is there any consensus about this in the DuPage County? Like, I know the superintendent's taught, and I know, you know, some schools are bigger than others and smaller and everything, but is there any certain?
Right now, most, well, large high schools are saying, under the current phase four guidelines, they find it very difficult to be in-person learning because of the size of their schools. But the consensus seems like that we're planning for some type of a hybrid where school students will be in for some of the days of the week. They'll be learning for part of the day, part of the week. And then there will be a day built in there for the cleaning of the schools and for staff to kind of plan. That seems to be the consensus is that we'd probably be looking at some type of a hybrid.
So obviously, for our special needs students, there's going to have to be some additional thought given to this. And I'm sure you're working on that. My experience, it just really was difficult to motivate. So much of of students motivation comes from being around their peers. So I look forward to, I guess, hearing more about how that's going to be addressed. Because when they're out of school, I imagine they're falling more rapidly behind than a typical student would, so.
Right, agreed, Joel. And I know there's been some conversations, again, among the superintendent's group. Some of our students with IPs and maybe ELL students and some other students. If we're limited to how many students can be in a building, possibly, you know, arranging for those students to be present in person. And then the students who, you know, really, they were doing very well with remote learning. Possibly, they're still in a remote learning environment, so there's that discussion as well. But we we definitely identify that we need to do a better job with our special population.
Kind of along those same lines. I know there was some talk from ISBE about summer schools being able to open up in stage four and looking at our students that are most vulnerable to a summer slump, which has been big time extended. If they weren't connected with e-learning, I was just curious if there was any conversation of targeting our kiddos that were not engaged in remote learning and trying to see if we could catch them up a little bit this summer or reach out this summer.
Dana, we are reaching out to those students. Here's here's part of the challenge with the ISBE. Prior to that coming out, that guideline, the ISBE said summer school had to be remote. That's what the the state, the state board about said. So we started our summer school June 8th, other districts started June 1st. And I think it was around June 4th that that guideline came out. And all of a sudden, the guideline comes out and the very quick Cliff Notes version on the front page is you can have in-person summer school. When you get to dig deeper into that and you see some of the restrictions that are involved with the in-person. But, you know, even for a district like ours, and I think we're pretty pretty flexible and we can change pretty quickly. Well, we don't have, we didn't have bus routes for the kids. You know, we weren't able to organize the transportation. We had already made that commitment to remote learning. So that's a little bit of a frustration, but we are reaching out to our struggling learners. And then that's why we're hoping that we get this next set of guidance sooner rather than later. Because eventually, again, we're going to reach a point where we're going to have to make some decisions. And hopefully, it's with some guidance from the state board event.
Has there been guidance already on if there is a student that's infected within the school? How that affects the school remaining open? I'm assuming there hasn't been guidance with that yet, but I just thought I'd ask.
No, there hasn't been guidance on that. But in conversations with DuPage County Public Health, they're also involved in our conversations. They believe that they will be the responsible for the contact tracing. So schools won't be involved in that piece. But in turn, you know, definitely, we would have to isolate that student. But whether or not we'd have to, you know, quarantine a class for 14 days, but keep the building open, or whether the entire school would have to close for, you know, a period of time. Those are the, you know, we haven't received that type of guidance yet.
Any other questions? Good, okay. Thank you. Obviously, we look forward to more information, obviously, when you get it. Okay, the next topic for discussion, district needs for trauma-informed classroom management.
And I know Laura Coyle had asked for this to be on the agenda. And, you know, our district already last school, you know, this past school year, we have our district leadership team, which is made up of administrators and teachers. We are already focused on social emotional learning and meeting the needs of students who have experienced trauma. Because we're already seeing students in our buildings that have experienced trauma. Unfortunately, we are developing our plan, our vision, and then we were derailed with the COVID pandemic. But we do have some things in place. We do recognize the fact that the recent closure and with the COVID-19, we have more students who are experiencing trauma, you know, and it's not just, you know, necessarily neglect or abuse. Things like natural disasters and serious illness and isolation from their friends and from school. And so some of the administrators are already doing some online staff development in that area about, you know, working with students that have experienced trauma because the behavior, you know, isn't something that, you know, you're going to be able to, you know, the traditional ways of consequence, consequential students isn't going to work. And so we need to have other strategies for working with our students. And then we're also planning, when we return with our full staff, to have some staff development for our full staff as well. So that we're better prepared, better informed for working with our students.
Yeah, thanks, Kevin, for addressing that. I did ask for this to be on the agenda, and it was really in response to the the things kids have gone through just recently with with COVID and even the racial tensions in our country right now. I think, you know, we were dealing with trauma with students prior to this. But I think the surge in what we're going to see when students come back in the fall is going to be something we just need to really think about how to be prepared for. And my personal opinion, and I'm glad to hear you're talking about it in this way, is that the more our, we can support our frontline staff members, our teachers to be equipped to identify the signs of trauma so that, and, you know, trauma can be defined in on a continuum, right? But the the, as you stated, that sometimes behavior is a result of of stress or trauma. And I just, I think it will be really important, especially as we're going back to a system of learning that is likely to be different than in prior years, that we focus as much as we can on ensuring students can learn. And that might first mean helping them pass some of the trauma. And so the more we can be prepared for that as well as just straight how we're going to instruct students in the fall, I think will will just better equip us to to help these students.
Agreed.
I think that this is a great thing to focus on and assess and evaluate during our strategic planning process, which also got derailed with COVID. When we were talking about goals around social emotional learning, student outcomes, the culture of our buildings, I think this is a great thing to hopefully include in that strategic plan.
Definitely.
Laura, thank you for asking to have this put on the agenda. I think this is obviously paramount to continuing educating our students. Yep. Okay, the next item, certificate of excellence.
I just wanted to share with the board that we submitted our comprehensive annual financial report to ASBO International again this year and for the June 30th, 2019 audit. And we were awarded the certificate of excellence in financial reporting. And it just shows the commitment that the district has to financial accountability and transparency. It's the 14th year that the district has submitted and received the award. And a copy of the certificate is attached and will likely do that again this year. We'll at least complete a CAFR, but if that becomes one of the areas where we want to save some money, there is a submission fee. So we can discuss that later.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Yeah, it's great news.
Okay. Everybody got there. I keep looking to see if I see any hands, so, okay. Okay, then moving along, Chromebook and iPad refresh.
You're up, Nadine.
Yep, as you have in your board packet, information about our refresh plan for Chromebooks and iPads. We had two conditions that kind of collided. One of the conditions was remote learning. And the fact that we deployed probably over 1,000 devices to our, including the one-to-one that we have as part of our regular programming. But we also deployed devices to almost all of our grades, two through five students to take home for remote learning and a number of devices for kindergarten and first grade. So right now, we have a lot, we have almost all of our classroom devices out with the families to use for remote learning as well as utilizing some learning learning opportunities during the summer, whether it be structured or unstructured, using the learning tools that the students are used to using during the classroom. So because of those devices being out with the families and we don't, we, there is not really an efficient and effective method to collect those devices for the summer, get them ready, and then put them back in the carts for the classroom. The second condition now makes it, makes our decision a little bit easier with regard to refresh cycles. So we knew we were going to refresh the the devices that were deployed in the classroom carts for grades, kindergarten through fourth grade. We knew we were going to have to do that at the end of the 2021 school year. By refreshing those devices this summer before the start of the school year, the students can keep those those Chromebooks and iPads that they have right now. They can keep them at home in case we have to kind of turn on a dime and that remote learning happens again. And then the classrooms will be equipped with the new, with newer technology. And those those will be, those shared carts will be then reestablished and equipped with the new devices. At the end of the school year or at the end of remote learning or when if we, you know, are able to find a way to to bring those devices back, they won't be viable past the end of the school year anyway. So we'll make decisions in terms of what whether or not we'll sell those to a parts company or whatever. But that's as the information indicated is that the refresh of the iPads and the Chromebooks was part of part of our refresh refresh plan in our regular budgeting. And we're just going to make that happen before the school year so that the students have everything they need for learning, regardless of whether they're doing the learning in the classroom or at home.
Question?
Nadine, I guess my only question would be, and you just kind of answered it, I just want to make sure that I understood it correctly. We're not using any additional funds, we're using the funds from the 2021 school year to fund these.
That that's correct. This is part of our regular, our, yep, our technology budget, about 40% of our technology budget is is just part of the regular routine refresh cycle. And that's that's the part of the budget that will be used for this program.
Okay.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, thank you. Then the next topic, website project.
I'm sure you're aware of the fact that our our current website has been in place and the design and the functionality has been in place for about seven years. And we've been talking over this past school year about updating it, making it, making it a more modern, fresh look as well as increased or, you know, improved functionality for the modern technology, particularly using the use. for the modern technology, particularly using the use of, using phones and tablets for accessing our website. We've been talking about this since about November, and we were in the process of vetting a couple of, of vendors, and I had a, a group of parents that came together to talk about, you know, what a new, what website would need and what features they would want. And I brought in a group of, I brought together a group of staff to have those same discussions. And then we didn't have time to follow through before the end of the school year so that we could make decisions in a, you know, give us a little bit more time. The remote learning and the type of communication and the interaction between our community and our school district through electronic media has been really important during remote learning and during this COVID crisis. And, and we, and Mr. Carey has done, you know, regular communication through, through our tools, and we've done our best to try and hold a hub of remote learning resources as well as promote the use of our hotline. But our website, the improvement of our website would really reinforce that sense of two-way communication between our community and our, our school district. And so we, we, I contacted the vendor of our choice, and I said, is it even feasible to, to, if we started now, could we get it done and up and running by the beginning of this, you know, by, by August? And, and if we work really hard, we could refresh our website and make it look modern and updated and engaging and, you know, great pictures and really easy to find, easy to navigate information, we could get that done by the beginning of the school year. So I'm ask, I'm asking the board if they have any questions or anything that I haven't considered with regard to the update of the website to happen this summer.
I think that's a great project, Nadine. I think it's something that really could, technology is becoming more and more important. We're relying on it. One of the big goals that we've talked about for a long time in the district is how can we improve communication, particularly to parents and the community? And the website is a one very important tool in that. I struggle with spending money on anything when we don't have a broader financial plan to deal with our deficit. It has nothing to do with the validity of the project itself. It's a very important project that I think needs to be done, and our community has been asking for it. It's how can, I'd love to see us move forward with our strategic plan, in particular, our financial strategic plan, so we can prioritize projects like these, because I think that it's very important.
The, on the last page of the handout that I provided for you, we have an annual subscription for our current website. We've, it's just a routine cost, it's part of the 10%, you know, it's part of the 50% of my budget that goes to annual costs. And it's, it's, you know, every year it comes up for renewal. So every year, we have to pay our renewal for our website. The renewal fee is around $11,400. If we changed the company and we switched our model, we can not only get help from the company to shift all the content over and redesign the template and, and cover the annual fee for this, for this year, you know, part of our annual budget for less cost than it would cost for us to renew our current website. Going forward, the, the annual fee for the new company and the features and the functions are the same. There's the mass communication, there's a, there's a beautiful template, there's support, ongoing support, there's hosting, all of those functions are the same with the new company as, as they are with the old company. But the cost would, of the annual, of the annual fee would decrease. So our, so by going with this, it, this, I'm not, this would not be an over and above, I'm not, wouldn't be asking the board for additional funds. This, once again, is part of my, 50% of my, of our technology budget is, goes toward routine refresh and a routine fees that we pay every year to keep things going. That's what this, that's what this program would be taken from. So to answer your question, this would actually be a cost savings.
That's great, Nadine. That's fantastic.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, then we will move on to the next item, which is Board of Education Transition Planning. And since this was a topic that I had asked to have put on the, on the agenda, I'm going to start with my comments, and then obviously we can have a broader discussion. On March 10th, at a special meeting, the board had, the board had a preliminary discussion regarding board transition. The discussion centered around the fact that potentially four senior board members would be leaving the board in May of 2020, 2021, and our current, at the time, three junior board members would possibly be assuming leadership roles as officers. So just for background purposes for the community, community to understand, the board has board protocols that all of our current members have agreed, agreed to on May 21st, 2019. Part of that is unity of purpose, that we be a team with common focused direction. We perpetuate a positive district culture that survives in the face of board member and staff turnover, create a safe environment for the productive exchange of ideas. Board members will sincerely listen and seek to understand the viewpoints of others. No surprises, no one gets surprised at any time in the meeting or between meetings. The truth of no surprises is respect. Each board member and the superintendent must respect all other participants. So the March 10th meeting was not recorded or televised as it was designed as a special meeting for a board workshop concerning financial discussions. Mr. Armstrong made a request for a board transition discussion just prior to that meeting. On the afternoon of March 10th, I received a surprise phone call from Mr. Armstrong, and he informed me that the board would be looking for the officers to step down from their positions and that new officers would be selected. He said that he had a majority. I then reached out to the IASB to see if they could provide guidance on the best practice for a smooth board transition for 2021. Ms. D. Molinier, our IASB rep, suggested that some boards allow for junior board members to shadow senior board members so that they can learn the ropes and then would be able to lead successfully when a new board was formed. I asked her if she ever heard of current board officers stepping down or being removed and new officers taking over midterm. And she said that, no, she had never heard of that. She said that new officers should be mentored by the current officers and that this was a natural progression. At the meeting on March 10th, I shared the above information with my fellow board members, and I said that I 100% support a smooth transition plan that allowed for senior members to train junior members to assure, ensure a smooth transition to new officers in May 2021. During the discussion that ensued, other board members expressed their views. I will not cite exactly what was said by others, I will leave that to them. However, it was stated emphatically that the plan was for three officers to step down from their positions. I stated in no uncertain terms that I thought that was not a good plan, and it did not follow best practice or our own board policies. It was then agreed that the final discussion on this topic would occur in June after the school year ended. I think it is extremely important for our community to witness these extreme changes at a televised open board meeting. In the meantime, both Joel Price and I have reached out to our attorney about process and procedure regarding this matter. Our attorney has given board counsel on this and given us a number of different options that could be taken by the board. I have included all of the options on tonight's agenda under agenda, under action items. And tonight, we will have the ability to vote on any or all of the options listed in on the agenda. So here we are at the June meeting. I feel very strongly that the community has a right to know exactly what the board's intentions are. I believe in transparent government, always have. So we can now finalize this discussion. I have been pushing for over a year for a board transition plan to be created. Since I heard nothing, I invited each of the junior board members to accompany Kevin and I for our agenda meetings last year, and that did happen. I feel strongly that best practices should be followed. The IASB has never heard of a plan where board members are replaced midterm. I would also strongly advocate for each of the current officers to mentor junior board members so that they are, in fact, ready to assume leadership roles in May 2021. I also feel strongly that my fellow senior board members, some of them, are doing a huge disservice to our junior board members by thrusting them into a role that they are not yet ready or trained for. This would only set them up for failure. It would be a detriment to the district to have untrained leaders, especially given the uncertainty of what lies ahead concerning the state of our school opening in the fall, like we just heard about, as well as many other issues. This is no time to be reorganizing the Board of Education without a well-thought-out plan. This will only end badly for the district. That's all I have to say.
Well, I will jump in, and I'll say, best practices for a board are whatever the board determines those practices to be. And we've attended numerous IASB board self-evaluations, and the one thing that comes crystal clear is the board takes responsibility for itself. And that can be done in many different ways, and it can be done through a process like this, and we're not always going to agree. This is probably one of those rare times where we don't. I can think of a couple others. But the board sets the course, and the board majority sets the course. My concern, my interest in this plan, as it was discussed or brought up, or however you want to, to remember it, was that it was to develop the strong leadership for the next board leaders. And we know we had, at the time, three board members who would be continuing on in service, and the likelihood that four board members would be departing. And so I've been on this board 11 years. Two years before that, I attended every board meeting. Interestingly enough, at those board meetings, the then superintendent and then board president often had a police officer in the room. And tonight, for some reason, at a very quiet board meeting, we have a police officer in the room. I'm assuming it was requested by the board president, and it certainly is a surprise to me. So I think that's worthy of mentioning. We have, as a board, and I thank you, Jill Ron, for your thoughts that were shared earlier, we have done tremendous work in this district and come very, very far from where we were. And Marie has led a lot of that, but she has also done it in consult and with the approval of a board majority. And there's no issue with any of that. There's no taking away any of the success that has occurred. My interest is in making sure we have strong leaders that are able to carry that on, carry that forward, and feel confident in doing so. I think the plan that was described was a, a good one, and it could have worked very well if we all would have agreed, but we don't. So that brings us to this point. I will say that I think my sense from talking to numerous board members, because we have had quite a few over my term, is that there was a certain level of appetite, or there was a certain appetite for a change in board leadership, just for more variety's sake than anything else. A different style of leadership, different ideas, different relationships with the superintendent, whatever their reasons, you know, most boards do share those roles. And I, I don't see anything wrong in asking for that to happen at the very end of very successful careers for Marie, Gary, and myself. So I, I know, for example, as Sasse said, every year, they rotate leadership. I don't see this as being, or needing to be, the issue that's being made out of it. I think the board wants to be comfortable in moving forward, and, you know, a board majority will, will make that happen, or they won't make that happen. I think we have a lot to be proud of. We've done a lot of hard work, and I want to see that continue. And I do, I worry about having so many open seats and not enough experience next year. And I don't want to, my legacy, the things that we've done on our, the boards I've served on, I don't want that to flail because we didn't prepare people properly. So we have a disagreement of how that preparation should happen, still be it. I, I don't, I don't see it, see it being as detrimental as Marie pointed out, but everyone is entitled to their opinion. And I think that's, kind of sums it up. I'll speak with my vote.
Does anybody else have any?
Thank you. Obviously, because there have been some comments submitted, the public is kind of wondering why this is happening. Mr. Armstrong had told me that the public has been asking him, what's going to happen to the board? Well, I wouldn't know. I would assume we would be the same successful board we had been in the past, and I'm very proud of where the board went that I supported when they first got on the board. When they first got on the board, they did things the way they wanted their way, and it worked. So for the public to not know that this happened in a closed session meeting, that's number one, wrong on many levels. And in looking at transition, I've been asked today, what's a transition? We don't have a transition. We have a transition to just put people in place in previous officers' positions. So I went ahead and I looked up what a transition is, and I am getting, business doesn't operate in a vacuum, nor should a transition plan.
It includes reviewing the successes and capabilities and needs, and the interest of other stakeholders also needs to be examined and coordinated to the planning effort.
of other stakeholders also needs to be examined and coordinated to the planning effort. To advance coordination among these related components provides a increased likelihood of a successful transition post-transition results. So even though we are having a transition discussion, we have no transition plan at this point, other than to remove the president, vice president, and secretary. I don't believe that all three officers feel the same way, and if those that don't feel, that do feel that way, that they want to resign, and they should. I don't think it should be a forced position of saying, well, we all three have to do it. I think the public is really now wondering, and after this meeting, they're going to wonder a lot more, because it looks very secretive. It is very secretive, and it was very secretive, to say, yes, I have the board majority. Most of the board majority has been taken before it gets to me. And then it's, then I get a call from Mr. Armstrong indicating that he would like my opinion, but when I start, he goes, I have the board majority. This isn't your role. This is the president's role. I didn't know any better. I thought she had told you to do it. Lots of positions have been usurped on and taken on under their own, their own intent. Some people don't know their place. But it also lends to the community, something's wrong. What's wrong? What did Marie do wrong? Did Gary or Joel do something wrong? No, nothing's wrong. What's wrong is that somebody wants to come in, change up the board. I shouldn't say change up, because we have the right to change it, but to just decide that this needs to be implemented right now, and then jump on the junior board members and get them on track and on board with it too. So you have your way then. And the public just needs to know, this is not how we have operated in the past with transparency. Nothing's been transparent at this at all until this was posted on the agenda. There's been nothing wrong. The president hasn't done anything wrong. The vice president hasn't done anything wrong. Secretary hasn't done anything wrong. But yet, it has now put a cloud over the public of, something's wrong. And in the past, for the years that all of you have been on the board, for the senior board members, nobody says anything in the public unless there is something wrong. So now that we have that veil over that, well, something's wrong, because they're just going to shake up the whole board, that's unnecessary, and it's uncalled for. And it's, it's, we should not be operating this way. That's all I have to say.
I would like to respond to Joel's questions, but if someone else, if, I'm not finished. Let me finish. So I will certainly let everyone else finish, but I do want to respond to Joel's question. So go ahead.
Laura, do you mind if I go? Okay. So I, this is a really difficult situation. We did have a discussion in open session, not closed, but it wasn't open in the traditional sense that we were on camera. I want the public to understand that. And it, so it feels, you can feel the tension, even though I'm not in the room, and we have been really lucky to have every single board member that we have. And I'm a fairly new board member. I am, I've been on the board for about a year, a little over a year, and there are strengths that every single board member has. There's been significant contributions. This is one of, especially our, our four more senior members, Judy, Gary, Marie, and Joel, have worked tirelessly over so many years at one of the hardest volunteer jobs there is. And there's, this is a no-win situation. When the board feels differently on something, it's, it's just a really difficult, difficult thing. But we need to come together and work professionally and kindly to move forward for our district. Marie, you are right. This is a very trying time, that, with coronavirus, the racial conversations that we need to be having as a district and a country. And no matter how tonight plays out, I want us to all come together and to remain strong and move forward together well, because every single person here has value and is important.
Yeah, and I, so I'll just chime in and say, just upfront, I'm going to put it out there, I'm in favor of the transition. I, I have tremendous respect for Marie and Joel and Gary. I think what they have done in their tenure as board officers and board members has been tremendous, and there is no doubt in my mind that we would not be where we are today if they were not in those positions. There is, that, there is absolutely no doubt in my mind that they have been instrumental to driving the district to where we are today. And Marie, I, for you as president specifically, you have always gone above and beyond the call of duty as president and as a parent in this district. I thank you for that. I thank Joel and Gary for your time as officers. And I, I also just thank all of you for having this conversation about how we can thoughtfully transition the officer positions to the, the rest of the board. And, and there is no, there is no easy answer on this. There was a meeting in March. I think, you know, that meeting can be, unfortunately, that meeting did not have public attendees and was not recorded, and I think, you know, that, that is truly unfortunate, because I think it, it would help the public understand this transition a little bit more. That said, I don't really want to talk about the past. This transition isn't about the past, it's about the future. And I really believe that, you know, you as officers have been in your positions for a very long time, and sometimes change is good, and sometimes change is healthy. And I really believe that this change will be good and healthy for the rest of the board and for our district. And as difficult as it is, I, I just firmly believe that. I'm one of the newer faces on the board, I've been on the board for two years, and what I've learned is that the officer positions are really critical. They shape the dynamics of the board, they shape the board makeup, they shape the interactions between the board and the administration, and you all have done a tremendous job over your time. And I, I've already learned from you, watching how you've operated, and I thank you for being willing to allow this transition to happen, for a continuation of your legacy and, and for a strong future for the district.
Okay. Did anybody else have anything?
Since we are talking about transitioning, is there a transition plan I'm not aware of, other than just flipping offices real quick? I don't see any comprehensive definition of what the job entails for each officer. I would imagine, unless there's been other meetings, and I'm not aware of, that perhaps junior board members don't know either. But you can't say we're transitioning and not have a plan. I mean, it makes us look foolish. Of the transition, if, if everybody agrees to step down, is that what I'm hearing, that everyone is agreeing to step down, or you are wanting everybody to step down? I don't know. Somebody help.
I think I'll just say, best what Joel said, we've got a number of options on the agenda for voting tonight, and see what happens with the vote.
Well, again, putting someone in an office and not having a plan, I wouldn't wish that on somebody to take over an office and not feel that they know what the office consists of. I wouldn't wish for someone to take a presidency and not have the history or the experience with the district. No insults intended, just that I know that Marie took over somewhere in that frame like that at one point. But I, you know, we're saying, we're telling everybody we're transitioning. What are we transitioning aboard to different positions? The public needs to know what the transition plan is, other than that, and I'm not aware that we have one.
Judy, can I, can I speak to that? I think that's an excellent, I think that's an excellent point. One of the ways I hope that we start to do that, because you're right, if there's a transition formal plan, I'm also not aware of it. Oops, sorry, I was muted. Judy, I just agree with you. I think having a formal transition plan's really important, I think especially in light of John's resignation, which was a shock and a blow to this board, and really will create a whole other, this new person coming in that will need to be oriented and transitioned in, as well as Laura and I, minimum, doing that after the new, the next members are elected. One of my hope is there's also an agenda item tonight that we, we're going to discuss or vote on about having a board retreat with the state, with a mediator to help us have that conversation. And I, I hope that, I know what my vote will be for that item. I hope that that can be done in a way that is strategic and thoughtful with guidance professionally for what we should do next.
Dana, I will say that, that item is on the agenda. It was one of the options that our attorney provided for us. So I just, I just need to respond to a couple of the comments that Joel had made. Number one, I have also been on the board for 11 years, and two years before that, attending every single meeting, and as well as attending an IASB conference as a guest. So, and then when I was seated, along with Mr. Price, it was decided that I would be the board president. And if anybody was paying attention in 2009, our district was going through a, a very different time. However, when I took that role of board president that was entrusted to me, I had already had a two-year education of learning on my own, as well as participating, kind of learning how not to do something as well. So I stress that, okay? The, the question about an appetite for leadership and about sharing the roles, well, I'd like to state emphatically that this board president has, has been very, very, very busy. And part of it is because none of the other officers ever really wanted to step up to take on any of the other roles. Now, that's, you know, that's appetite for leadership, or whatever, however it wants to be called. But I also like to feel that as a board president, who has been elected by the community, I like to think that there have been times that I was trying to spread the message of the district. And one thing that came to mind is recently, in this COVID crisis, when everything happened in a flash, Kevin, Carrie, and the administrators and the teachers started working very, 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 very hard to put together a plan for how this was going to play out. It played out on a Friday, when there was no school. So all of a sudden, this thing hit. So Kevin started putting together probably daily emails at the time about what was happening. And it turned out that there were so many people that had so many questions that, like simple things, can I get into my locker? Can I do this? Can I do that? So I did reach out to the board, and we, I put out a statement, and it was agreed on by the majority, because that's the way I have conducted myself as a board leader, that I reached out to the community saying, listen, if one parent has a question, maybe other parents have a question. So one of the things that Kevin and I did, we worked very closely, where if somebody had a question about, let's say, the, can I get into my locker, whatever, whatever, I would pick up the phone and call Kevin, and then I would share that with the community right away, to the point where we developed a frequently asked questions place. One thing that happened is Kevin was sending out emails, maybe sometimes even two, two times a day, there were parents who weren't getting those emails. So what I started to do was, every time Kevin put out an email, I posted it on every single page that I knew that parents would be able to reach out to. So call it a PR director, call it whatever, because I have always believed in open communication. But part of the reason I'm bringing that question up, I mean, that topic up, is because when we want to talk about leadership roles, to me, that was a leadership role that kind of just came about based on my years of experience, my incredible working relationship with the superintendent. And so, again, there was a mention about sharing the roles. That has never occurred before, before this. Mr. Price mentioned about that there's a police officer in the room. There's a police officer in the room, because I asked to have a police officer in the room as the board president, who is in charge of the, running the meetings and making sure that they are efficient and they are run well. There has been talk about that you, that Mr. Price was surprised by that. Well, I have been surprised on this, on this topic since March 10th. The, the item was put on the board agenda without any previous notice to anybody, other than just that it was asked to be put on the agenda. And I was surprised to find out that there were numerous conversations that had been going on outside of the board meeting, because by the time we got to the board meeting, it was already a done deal. So the question about surprise, yes, there have been a numerous amount of surprises. I have been, I have been hearing that there have been a whole lot of board meeting, board discussions going on as well, outside of this board meeting. And so in the interest of maintaining a dignified meeting, I asked to have a board officer, a, a police officer at this board meeting. And especially you, Mr. Price, know that that was something we used to have to do in the past, and I will be very clear that I asked him to come here for no reason other than to hopefully have a calm, what does our board protocol say, exchange of ideas, unlike what happened at the March 10th meeting. So I will confer, I will concur with Judy that this, tonight, is the first time the community is learning about the fact that somehow there is a need to midterm have transitions. And if that is something that the board wants to do, yes, the board certainly has the ability to do what it wants to do. But the board also, and I myself, have a duty to say that this is not the way to do it. This is just another piece of dysfunction, because if we were going to do this correctly, we would have president-elect potentially, so that there could be a shadowing of the position until May of 2021, which I suggested to everyone in, at the March meeting. But that was not something that was agreed upon. Apparently, it had been already agreed upon what was going to happen. So here we are now, tonight. I promised the community openness and transparency. So that's where we are tonight. We do have a number of items on the agenda for an action item, and everybody will be able to vote on what they feel. And I will just say, same thing as Judy, if there is a transition plan out there, I have not heard of it. So other than that, if someone has one, they want to share, fine, otherwise, we can, we can move forward. Any other comments?
I think, given the climate of the March meeting, and this was brought up by Mr. Armstrong, given the climate of that, I understand why a police officer is here. We all know that people can, the public can FOIA anything. We're not being transparent. We're not being transparent. That's not what, at least when the three of you were running, that's, that was one of your big, big platforms, that public knows, public knows. So to bring this up and close session when you know that it's not being televised is, this whole thing has started out wrong on so many levels, and we should be able to have a adult conversation, sharing ideas. We might not agree with each other, we might not like what the other one says, but in the end, on other issues as well, we always support what the majority is. This is not going to be one of those issues, I'm afraid. It's because it's been handled poorly from the get-go. And as I have seen that there have been underlying things, um, going on, talking, um, conferring, getting a, um, it just, it just is not right. Having an email from Joel saying, reply to me personally, that's not transparent. I have no idea who might have replied to him. But I guess we won't know.
Okay, anybody else before we move on? Okay, the next topic is discussion of board officer transition. Joel, I'd wanted that on the, on the.
Well, that's basically the same. I think you have the two same attachments there, correct?
Yep.
The attachments are, um, I believe the attachments that the attorney prepared for you? Okay. All right. So anyone else have anything on that topic?
Discuss any option?
Yes, I think when we get to the action items, um, in the, you know, and I think we can, I'll read off all of them and then each person, we can talk about what we, how we want to handle it.
Okay.
Because again, the, uh, our attorney had suggested different things and, uh, different options for the board. So, yes, we will do that, Judy. Thank you for asking.
Thank you.
Okay, so the first action item is approval of lunch fees for 2020 through 2021 school year.
As we discussed, um, during the student conversation earlier this year, we did not know whether lunch
Kim, you're muted.
Sorry about that. Um, as we discussed earlier, um, the share in our student fee discussion, um, we did not know whether we would have to change, um, lunch fees or not. And as part of the national, national school lunch program, we are, have to go through an exercise called the paid lunch equity and to determine, um, how our prices, uh, match up for paid and unpaid, um, students. And so as a result of those calculations, we need to raise our prices, um, by 10 cents for each lunch category this year. So this is just, um, the report for the board to, um, approve that. And then our school fees will be finalized for next year.
Kim, when you say category, what do you mean by that, lunch category?
When you look at the, um, memo, the elementary lunch, there's an elementary lunch price, and then there's three different tier of tiers of lunches for the junior high and high school, and then also an adult lunch. So each, each one of those is going to increase by 10 cents.
Okay, any other, um, questions or comments before we? Okay, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the lunch fees for the 2020 through 2021 school year as presented.
So moved.
Second. Roll call, please.
Jonathan.
Yes.
This is Coyle.
Yes.
Price.
Yes.
This is Strohmeyer.
Yes.
Wilson.
Okay, approval of authorization to pay additional June bills for fiscal year 2020. The chair will entertain a motion to authorize and direct the treasurer to pay any additional bills received in June that have been budgeted for the current fiscal year as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
This is Coyle.
Yes.
Price.
Yes.
This is Strohmeyer.
Yes.
This is Wilson.
Yes.
This is Jonathan.
Okay, approval of tentative 2020 through 2021 budget. Do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, I'm gonna share my screen in a minute. Um. All right, um, good evening. I have the, uh, 2020, 2021, sorry, it's hard to say, tentative budget presentation tonight. And I am just gonna start out with a couple qualifiers. Number one, um, the state budget form is not ready yet. So the tentative budget is on last year's budget form because the state is still putting together the FY21 budget form based on, um, some different reporting requirements that are going to take place for fiscal year 21. This budget is very fluid and I anticipate that it is going to be updated several times between now and the final adoption, given, um, all the uncertainty around the start of school, what school is going to look like for next year, and, um, just the continuing financial implications that, um, we as a district are facing, as well as, um, the economy, economy in general. So we'll start out with looking at our 2020, 21 revenues by source. So property taxes are the largest source of revenues for the district, both, uh, in terms of all funds and operating funds. So about 85.91% of our revenue comes from property taxes. Other local so, sources make up 3.78%. Um, that includes things like our school fees, um, tuitions, rental incomes, things like that in some of the funds. State sources, that's our evidence-based funding and any state grants, that's 7.4% for all funds. And then the operating funds, 7.59%. And federal sources is, um, right around 3%. And those are a lot of our, uh, our federal grants, so like our Title I, II, III, and IV. So overall revenues, 29 million in all funds and 27.6 million for the operating funds. The revenue assumptions include the tax levy, um, based on CPI of 1.9% for the 2019 levy and 2.3% for the 2020 levy. Interest income has been reduced, um, because of a significant decrease in interest rates and anticipation of reduced fund balances. Um, we were anticipating, um, lower fund balances based on property tax collection. Right now, as I pointed out earlier, um, our property tax collection is on target, but we don't know what the second half of the collection cycle is going to look like. And a lot of these updates were already reflected in our five-year plan, um, when we presented that in April. So grant funding right now is at our preliminary FY21 level, um, for some grants and FY20, um, allocations for some others. Um, we don't have final allocations for everything. And our evidence-based funding, um, is level at fiscal year 20. Right now, um, the governor, they've decided that they're going to fund at that level. That was in jeopardy earlier, um, in last, uh, past month. And right now it looks like we should be set at the fiscal year 20 level. CPPRT, tuition and fee income have all been adjusted, um, slightly to account for the possible impact of COVID-19. Um, obviously, families have lost, uh, jobs, they're taking pay cuts and things like that. And so we anticipate that there will have, be some impact to our, um, fee collection and seeing increase in fee waivers, um, coming through the district. Real estate taxes, right now, the collection rate has remained the same. We did not, um, make a change for the preliminary budget. And based on what we've seen so far, we're going to keep it the same. But obviously, we'll be monitoring that as we go through the cycle. And if we see, um, our collections start to fall off, we may adjust that for the final budget. Medicaid reimbursement has been reduced. Um, mandated categoricals have not been reduced at this time. Um, and we, we will wait and kind of see again what happens as, um, we go through the next couple of months to see if we need to make some changes to that. But right now, it looks like we are supposed to receive similar funding for next year. Our rental income has been reduced. Um, we've seen a reduction already in rental of revenue for the current fiscal year for FY20 because we had to close our buildings. So, um, there was a large reduction in that. And food service revenue has also been reduced because obviously we didn't have students, um, in the buildings to purchase meals. Um, and so we, so our level of revenue was down, um, for that. And we anticipate to see that kind of thing happening next year again, because of the unknown nature of whether we'll have in-person learning or remote learning throughout the year. Our expenditures by object, um, salaries and benefits, um, combined are the biggest source of expenditures for the district. So our salaries are at 58% and benefits at almost 15%. Purchase services are around 12%. Supplies and materials, 5%. Um, capital outlay are a little over 1%. Um, we've budgeted for capital projects out of the capital projects fund where we'll abate, um, our working cash funds for different projects. And then we have, um, other objects, um, depending upon, in all funds, 4% and the operating funds, um, just 0.39%. Tuition is, um, so over, a little over 6%. Termination benefits are minimal at 0.1% and the non-capitalized equipment at, um, 0.6%. So overall expenditures are $31.8 million, um, in all funds, and then the operating funds, um, 29.3%, uh, 29.3 million dollars. Some of the, uh, assumptions based on expenditures, um, salaries for Wespa and the WCMA are still being negotiated for FY20. So it's difficult, we don't know what they are for the current year, which is done in a couple of weeks. So difficult to anticipate what that would look like for FY21. Uh, salaries for FY21 are flat for teachers and administrators to show where the budget could be at. Typically, in the past, we have given you kind of worst-case scenario of our expenditures. But what I wanted to show the board and the, the public in general is if we had salary freezes for, um, those two groups, what our fund balances, um, would look like. And so if we, uh, stepped and, uh, added the changes on base, um, as if the current contract for the teachers continued, that would be around a $399,000 increase. And for administrators, um, almost $31,000. And then there would be some additional TRS cost as well. Um, medical insurance is budgeted at the current rates for half of the year and at a 5% increase for the remainder of the year. Again, this could change. Um, right now, uh, we're seeing, um, favorable insurance, um, bills each month, but that's because most people have not had any elective, elective procedures over the past several months. Um, but that could very well change now that, um, medical practices are starting to do surgeries and things like that. And if there would be any cases of COVID, um, contracted by our, any of the district employees, we could see a significant change there. In the O and M fund, um, we have included funding for capital expenditures identified in the five-year capital plan that includes some minor masonry work at the, at South that still needs to be finished. Um, the purchase of the tractor with mower attachments and then the remaining life safety projects, um, that will not fit in the constraints of the life safety fund. And then we also budgeted, um, $50,000 for roof repairs. And in conversations with, um, Joe, our director of buildings and grounds, um, he felt that, um, we could do a lot with some repairs and I'd actually have to do some of the roof replacements. That some repairs could go a long way to making our roofs last. And the funds are being reserved in the O and M fund for the summer 2021 large projects, which include the building automation system. So again, we don't have a lot of capital expenditures in the O and M fund for, um, the beginning of the year, but we will, um, go out to bid, um, later, uh, in the winter and we might actually start some of those in June of next year. And then the capital projects fund also includes, um, projects to utilize the remaining working cash bond funds, and then funds will be transferred from the working cash fund. And then in the fire prevention and safety fund, if you will recall, the district, um, was awarded a $50,000 matching grant to fund some of those projects. And so, um, we are working on those right now. And then, um, so that will take care of quite a few of the life safety projects. And then additional funding to complete our life safety survey projects will come from the O and M fund. Um, building budgets were cut by 10%. Um, we made that decision that we.
This is Strohmeyer.
Yes.
This is Wilson.
Yes.
This is Jonathan.
This is Armstrong.
Yes.
Okay, the next item is approval of amendment to Westway 2019 through 2020 contract.
It's one of the things, we've been working on this for a while. It's still a work in progress, but, um, I have, uh, worded the amendment so that, um, the, the motion to allow me to finish up, uh, with our attorney working on this and to, um, present the final contract to Westway of up to 80% of the March 16 through April 30th, um, route, normal route cost, and then 30%, 37% of the May, the month of May, normal cost. So there's still a little bit tweaking in the language to do, but we'd like to, the approval for us to go ahead and, uh, not to exceed those parameters.
And that's pretty much with the other districts, surrounding districts.
Yes. Yeah, it, it varies.
A little bit here.
A little bit here and there, yes.
Can I interrupt for a second? Um, I've gotten a few text messages that the live stream isn't working. Um, and I think it's important for the voting process that we have the live stream working. I don't know what we do about that.
Yeah, me neither. I'll, I'll see if I can get Jeremy.
Okay.
Um, can I suggest maybe we take five minutes then? Is that okay? Or should we just, before we move on?
That works for me. Um.
I mean, it's just basically at this point, we can decide this because nobody's hearing. Does anybody know how long the community hasn't?
I got the first text at like 9:20, so only like a minute or two as far as what I can tell.
I just got another message that the live stream ended in the middle of Kim's presentation, someone said.
Okay, I just got a notice myself.
I know, I know that.
Just got one that says it's back up.
Right.
Hopefully that's right.
Kevin, what did you do?
I got ahold of Jeremy and he does it remotely. I can see him on this other computer that he's in there doing something.
Yay, that's magic.
Okay, so we're, well, if anyone missed Kim's presentation, they can certainly go to the board decks and see your presentation.
I would suggest that they do that.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
So for the transportation fund or contracts, as I was saying, um, I am suggesting that we're still tweaking a little bit of the language, but that the board approve, um, up to 80% of the March 16 through April 30th, normal, um, expenditure, normal cost and 37% of the month of May for Westway.
Okay, are we? Okay, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the amendment to the Westway 2019 through 2020 contract as presented.
So moved.
Second. And roll call, please.
This is Price. This is Strohmeyer.
Yes.
This is Wilson. This is Jonathan.
Yes.
Mr. Armstrong.
Yes.
This is Coyle.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the next one is approval of amendment to Sunrise 2019 through 2020 contract.
And for Sunrise, um, this is a little bit different. I'm, uh, asking the board to approve up to I'm asking the board to approve up to 37% of the March 16 through May 30th, normal cost. They did furlough all of their employees immediately. I have much more difficulty working with them, trying to get an agreement worked out. We may be at a point where we pay zero because of some of the issues in the contract language with them. And the conversation, interestingly enough, was they will give consideration for routes next year for the people who have actually paid them something. So when we know where, that one other district has not paid them anything, so we're at least ahead of that district. But just wanted to make the board aware of that. But they did furlough right away. Westway did not. They paid their staff through April. And so this has been a much more tenuous type of agreement and he does not like a lot of our language, but we're not going to change that. So if I can get something done by the end of the month, great. If not, then we'll deal with the consequences after that. So I just wanted the board to be aware of that and if you have any concerns, please share those with me now.
Kim, I'm sorry to interrupt again, but I, I just got a-
I saw your message.
Yeah, I just got multiple messages from people saying that the live stream still isn't working. They thought it was, but it took them back to the beginning of the meeting.
It seems like the meeting got cut off and has ended on that link that we sent out, if that's helpful for Jeremy to know.
I got, I was getting the same thing, so.
Yeah.
We last so long, right?
Wonder. I sent a text to Jeremy and to Nadine. No, she's not. I don't know if I were to stop this and open it again for the outside, if it would work. Yeah.
You know, I'm going to say, let's take five minutes and while we get this figured out and-
Great idea, Marie. That's a great idea.
Let's do that.
I'll, I'll start asking.
Yeah, I'm doing the same.
Right.
Let Marie, you, and let's just start texting people and see if it's up.
Yeah, I've actually heard from one of our employees, Courtney Temple.
I heard from Liz Redburn. Your feed is not working.
Okay, so how, I mean, what will, what we heard was, it was just a, a screen that said school board meeting. What will? Okay, Melanie says she's going to keep refreshing.
I'm unmuted, so. They should be able to see the live stream.
So far I've gotten one no.
I've gotten two no's.
I've gotten no too.
According to Nadine, she said it's back up. Marie? I already did that, so.
Is there a new link?
Yeah, there must, if there's a new meeting, then there's a new link. These people are clicking the old link and it's taking them the first two hours.
It should, should be the same link. It's not a new meeting. I had to re-log in to the same meeting, the same password and everything.
I've heard that my first person is on.
Okay.
Oh, she said it's not the same link.
So how did she get on?
Let me ask her. Oh, another person said they found it as well. It's listed as a new link on YouTube, she says. I'm assuming on the Village website, but let me ask. And another person said the same thing. It's from a different link. She said, I found it on the 201 media page.
Okay, if, if there's another link, then we're going to have to take a couple of minutes and I'm going to have to send out notice to people that there's another link. Because otherwise.
We got a lot of people who want, who want to-
Courtney says she's only got the recording of the meeting up to two hours, six minutes.
That's exactly, everybody's being sent back.
Except for the people that found the new link, then they're actually connecting to us right now, listening to this amazing conversation.
Those people went and tried to find it.
Right, so how do we share that link with?
Okay, Kevin, do you want to send out an email to everybody, do the same thing? And then I'm going to start sharing on Facebook that they should look for your email.
It says, oh, go ahead.
I don't have, this isn't my computer. So I don't have the parent link on here. Let me see if I can get to-
Nadine do that?
Yes.
Marie, I'm getting information that the CUSD 201 logo, if you click on it, then it'll take you to the new link.
Well, the thing is, and you know, I think we talked about this before, the technological knowledge of people is increasing, but if someone is sitting at home with, they're just waiting for the screen to refresh or whatever, they might not know how to do that. So if we, if we send out a link, just like Kevin did before, and then-
Oh, you know what? I, I'm using, I'm not using my own computer. This is a computer Jeremy gave me. So can you send out a parent link to everyone with that link? All right. All right, thanks. Yeah, she's going to send out, Nadine's going to send out a parent link.
Okay, um, yeah, that. Okay, I'm going to, now, I'm going to go. She's now unemployed and I'm going to tell her that as soon as that comes out, she could help spread that word and help us share that. And you know, she helped me put it on the Facebook pages. Does that sound good to everybody?
Yeah, there's already 12 people watching us right now.
How many people are watching before?
About 60.
Really?
Wow.
Yeah, okay.
Popular.
So that's, um, okay, I'm going to start with, I'm just going to start putting, posting. So the emails will be coming from you or from?
Nadine.
Yeah, I can do this myself.
Listen, she's sharing.
I just saw she, she did that, so I think as much, and I'm going to-
I think we should wait until Nadine sends it out before we can start? Question mark?
Yeah. Especially, you've already said how many people were there and now there's only limited numbers.
So if you're watching this very boring time, hang in there.
Okay, well, that makes, that's, okay, thank you. If you are watching this, please note that we, the board has taken a break while we're working out these, thank you for that, Dana. I put it on our school page to our official. Okay, so we, wait, just now. Dana? Is Dana there?
Yes, I'm here. Yep.
Okay, um, so you knew more than we're about 60 people watching?
Yes.
Okay, so I just got the email that that just went out. How many?
Oh, awesome, let me see.
Yeah, can you see?
Oh gosh, I'm getting all sorts of crazy emails. Dear, I'm, I'm sorry, let me focus here. Hold on. Now there's 23 people. Now there's 23 people.
Okay.
27, hello, 27. We're taking a break until we make sure that everyone has the new link.
At least we, um, there's a lot of hands going out sharing that, so let's-
I have not gotten the email as a parent. Oh, nope, I just got it as well, Marie.
Yep, me too. It should be, it looks like it's coming through to parents right now.
So we are back and up and running and live and recording, right?
Right.
Yes.
Okay, how many, what do we have? How are we doing? Okay, now, well, um.
We're at 32. 37. I think we're almost there, so why don't we get started for all?
Yeah, I agree.
You guys got the email a little bit later than I did, so the emails are probably come-
I need to look back on the agenda to see where we had left off. Had we voted on the, um?
We were talking about the Westway.
Right.
And we had not voted yet.
We haven't voted on Sunrise yet.
Okay, did, did, do we know if people got the, got the, heard the approval of the amendment about Westway?
Why don't we review that since it was the last thing that got cut off?
Okay, you know what? I will just start with that motion again.
41, she says no.
Okay, let's, should we start back with that motion now?
Yes.
Yeah, we can get started.
Yeah, let's get started. We got lots of people watching, so.
Okay, so, um, hello, everybody, we are back. We're back from our break while we work through the technology issues. We certainly apologize for that. Hopefully, everybody will be able to come back in. Kevin, will this be on, this will be on our website though then later? Okay, so if we missed anybody. So I believe where we left off was the approval of the amendment to Westway bus 2019 through 2020 contract. Should I just read the motion again then? We'll just, is everybody comfortable with that? Okay? The chair, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the amendment to the Westway 2019 through 2020 contract as presented.
No, you should have the updated, it should read for up to 80%. Did you not take a new?
No, you know what? Okay.
Okay.
Let me scratch that.
Kevin, do you have one of those?
Here.
I have it right here. I have it right here. I didn't, okay, uh, is there anything else changed?
Just the next one is also.
So let me go back to. Okay. Approval of amendment to Westway 2019 through 2020 contract. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the amendment to the Westway 2019 through 2020 contract for up to 80% of the normal cost from March 16 through April 30th and up to 37% of the normal cost for May as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call please.
Price.
Yes.
This is Stroud Meyer.
Yes.
This is Wilson. This is Charlton.
Yes.
Mr. Armstrong? This is Coyle.
Yes. Okay, Kim, is Sunrise?
Yeah, so Sunrise.
Want to talk about that then?
Yeah, we're still working with Sunrise on the contract amendment. They furloughed all of their staff right away. So we're looking at 37% of the normal cost. So we're looking at 37% of the normal cost from March 16th through May 30th. As I was explaining earlier, we're having some difficulty with them agreeing to our contract language. So if we can get this done by the end of the month with our contract language, that what we're looking for is the approval of up to 37%. The gentleman at Sunrise did make it clear to me that if we did not pay anything, we would be low on the list as they reopen things and provide transportation for other districts for the start of the school year. So I just want the board to be aware of that. You know, they are obviously in a different financial position than Westway because they did have to furl their staff right away. So there's concern probably that they'll be a viable entity anyway.
Kim, this is slightly off topic, but for busing for next year, I noticed that your transportation budget has been up a little bit. Is that because are, are we expecting our transportation costs to go up, whether it's Westway or Sunrise?
Right.
Because we need to do only a few students on the bus, et cetera?
So the budget does not contain any expenditures related to COVID-19 precautions and transporting? So if we had to have fewer students on a bus and increase the number of routes and things like that, that cost would go up even more. This is just based on our contractual increases. So we approved the Westway contract at the last board meeting for, I think it was 2.5%. And then Sunrise goes up by CPI. And as I had stated in the budget presentation, our special education transportation costs and our homeless transportation costs have increased quite a bit this year. Just for the, where placements are or things like that, or the number of students, you know, additional, a couple additional students outplaced and things like that. So those costs are significantly higher than last year. So that's built in, in anticipation that it will be similar next year.
Okay, anything else? All right. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the amendment to the Sunrise 2019 through 2020 contract for up to 37% of the normal cost from March 16th through May 30th as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
This is Stromeyer.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson. This is Charlton. Ms. Armstrong. This is Coyle.
Yes.
Ms. Price. Thank you.
Approval of Chromebook and iPad refresh. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the Chromebook and iPad refresh as presented. So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
This is Stromeyer.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson. This is Charlton. Ms. Armstrong.
Yes.
Ms. Coyle.
Yes.
Price.
Yes.
Thank you.
Approval of website project. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the website project as presented.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Wilson. This is Charlton. Ms. Armstrong.
Yes.
Ms. Coyle.
Yes.
Ms. Price.
Yes.
This is Stromeyer.
Yes.
Okay, the next number of, number eight, nine, 10, 11, and 12 are all motions. And then, depending upon how that goes, then we would go to 13 and 14. Do we want to go through these one by one and see what people feel?
I do.
Sure.
Okay. The first one is approval of board conducting another board self-evaluation with the IASB. Anybody wanted to comment before I read the motion, please let me know.
Well, is, are we doing, are just deciding to have another meeting, another IASB self-evaluation?
Yes, based on, yes, that's what the board, that's what the vote is here in front of us. Do, does the board want to approve the board conducting another self-evaluation?
Is that the motion, Marie?
Yes.
Okay, so one comment I have on that is, we don't really need to vote on this to have a, to set up a meeting. We can do that anytime there's board consensus for that. So I don't know if I want to, while I support the idea of another board self-evaluation, I'm not sure I want to commit to it just yet. With a vacancy on the board, we might want to wait for that. So I'm certainly open to it, but I think I would prefer to wait rather than to have a vote and commit to it.
I, I think that makes sense. If we're going to be searching for another board member, we might as well wait. And when that board member's on board, then we can have a full board again to go to an IASB self-evaluation. I agree with that, Joel.
Dana, you had talked about this, this motion that, and jump in here after my question, this does not limit the board to do it like right now. It's just part of the suggestion that the attorney responded to, to Joel's email. So did you want to talk about that?
Sure. I think we would likely have a consensus that another board's self-evaluation is probably a good idea. I, I disagree with Joel and Gary a little bit on the timing, which is fine. We could work that out. I'd almost like to have a board's self-evaluation before a new board member were to join to kind of iron out some of the issues that have been raised through this process. So we can kind of start fresh in a better place when a new board member joins, but I'm happy to do whatever the board wants to do as far as timing. I just wanted to share that opinion.
We could do two things. We can have two motions. We can have one that says to do this within 60 days. Because we have 60 days to appoint a new person. And then we can say after board position has been filled, we can do two motions. What does, what do people think of that?
I would be in favor of having one sooner than later. I think the board needs it.
Okay, so we could do, we can do one motion that says before 60 days?
Yes.
Dana, you, you agree with that?
Yes, but I'm curious what Laura has to say. Laura, you have a look.
I'm not, I'm just, yeah.
Yeah, no, I just have a confused look because I, I just want to make sure we all know what we're voting for here. And, and Gary and, and Joel have mentioned that, or maybe Joel specifically mentioned that we don't really need to vote in order to have a board self-evaluation. And I know this was one of the options presented in the lawyer's memo to us regarding transition. So I am fully in favor of a board's self-evaluation. I have my thoughts and concerns about how they are structured and how we approach the board's self-evaluation. I think we would need to do a lot of fine tuning as a board, how we approach those self-evaluations and what we really want to get out of them. So I'll just put that on the table and then set it aside for now. That said, I think I, I am hesitant to vote on this issue until I really know what we're, what we're saying we're voting on. If we're just voting on having another session as a self-evaluation, that's fine. If it is tied to the transition specifically, then I do not want a vote on a self-evaluation to delay our vote on the transition. So I just want to clarify as we vote on a self-evaluation, is that distinctly tied to the transition or is it separate?
Laura, you brought up a, you brought up a very good point. You know, I think, you know, the board had, always has the option to do a self-evaluation. And so your point is well taken. But I think at this point, my opinion would be that it would be good to take a vote just to see that we're committed to working through these issues that we currently have. And it, we could clearly tie it to the transition plan when we talk about whatever the transition plan is. Dana, so, so that's, that was my response to Laura. Dana, does that cover what you were looking for?
Now Laura has got me confused as well. So just to clarify, all we're talking about is having a board's self-evaluation that would be discussing transition or any other board issues. This is not replacing any other vote that we're having as far as transition. Is that correct?
That is absolutely correct.
Then I'm feeling good.
Okay, let me ask this. Let me, let me throw this out there. The current motion, you guys all have the motion in front of you. You have the motion in front of you, right? We could say that the chair will entertain a motion to approve the board conducting another self-evaluation, including transition processes with the IASB.
Why, why do we include that?
Because Laura just said it.
I think the self-evaluation is a self-evaluation that covers any number of issues. We've been through a number of them. So I don't think we need to specify all the issues we want to talk about in the self-evaluation. Again, I still think, you know, I'm looking ahead at what we have on our plate this summer. So we have a lot of extra meetings. We have a superintendent's self, our superintendent evaluation to work on. We have possibilities of negotiations and things like that going on. So I just want to be, everyone to be aware that that'll be another thing on our plate. And I'd like to really schedule that at a time that's, we all feel will be best based on, you know, what's, what we're facing. So...
Well, one of the things we're facing is a transition of some sort, too, that has been brought up in the last couple of months. So my question to the board is we have a single motion here in front of us. It does not change any other motions. What do we, so let's, let's, Dana, do you want to vote on a motion like this? Let's just go around.
Yep.
You do. Judy?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
I say yes. Joel?
You want to, you're asking if we want to vote on it?
Without changing the language that's in front of us.
Just as is?
Just as is presented. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the board conducting another board's self-evaluation with the IASB.
Okay, Dana, you're saying? Yes. Okay. Laura, you're saying yes. Okay, so Judy said, I, I say yes. Joel?
Well, you already have enough to vote on it.
I, I know, but I'm just trying to ask the question to everybody.
So I would say no.
You say no. Joel, Gary?
As long as we're not changing the wording, I say yes.
The chair will entertain a motion to approve the board conducting another board's self-evaluation with the IASB.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Charlton.
Yes.
Ms. Armstrong.
Yes.
Ms. Coyle.
Yes.
Ms. Price.
No.
This is Stromeyer.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Okay, the next motion is a motion to approve the election of board members to shadow the current off, the board officers. This one is specifically about electing board members to shadow current board officers. Does everybody see how it is written? Are we ready to vote on this one?
Sure, I am.
Okay, Judy? Just, we're just going to vote on it?
Yes.
Laura?
No.
No, I'm, I'm asking if you want to vote on it?
Oh, if I want to vote on it? Yes.
That's all we're...
Sorry, I thought we were voting on everything.
No, 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 I'm just, right now, I'm just making sure.
So confused, but yes, let's go ahead and, let's go ahead and vote.
Okay, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the election of board members to shadow the current board officers as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Armstrong.
No.
This is Coyle.
No.
Ms. Price.
No.
This is Stromeyer.
No.
Wilson.
Yes.
This is Charlton.
Yes. Okay, the next motion. I'll just go ahead and read it then. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the voluntary resignation of the current board officers from their officer positions as presented.
I'm going to suggest we just table this one indefinitely because we have no resignations. So it doesn't make sense.
Okay, I'm going to pull it out.
So we should vote on whether to table it or not?
Yeah.
To whether we want to vote on it or not?
Right, I would like to just pull up the information where this came from. So just give me a moment, please. Oh, here it is. It's on page four of the letter from the attorney. This is referencing an amicable transition through voluntary resignation and a new election. You have the letter, right, that the attorney sent you?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's where that came from. So this is about is there an amicable transition through voluntary resignation and new officers?
So I move that we table this indefinitely.
I support that.
I do not support that.
It's fine with me if we don't have anybody who's voluntarily resigning. I mean, I guess that's the point of the motion.
So the point of the motion would be to table it, so we should vote on whether we want to table it indefinitely.
Okay. Joel wants to table this motion indefinitely. Dana, do you want to table it?
It's been moved and seconded here, here. If you didn't hear, I made the motion to table and Gary followed up with a...
Okay. Can we get a roll call then, please?
Ms. Coyle.
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
This is Stromeyer?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
No.
This is Charlton?
No.
Mr. Armstrong?
Yes.
Okay, the next item is the same thing, approve, well, no, not the same thing, approval of removal of current board officers from their officer positions.
And I'm also going to make a motion that we table this indefinitely.
Again, I support that.
Will we get a roll call, please, Kevin?
Mr. Price?
Yes.
This is Stromeyer?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
No.
This is Charlton?
No.
Mr. Armstrong?
Yes.
This is Coil?
Yes.
The next item is Board Resolution abbreviating current officer terms and attached in board docs.
Is this, um, is this available to the public to read, though? Is it just our executive content? I just want to make sure we're reading it out loud if the public doesn't know.
It is not. It is not.
Okay, Marie, do you mind reading it out loud?
It's under administrative content. Yes, I'd be happy to read it out loud. Is that your question?
Yeah, I just wanted, I wasn't sure if the public knew what, what we were voting on.
It, it does not. Kevin, is this okay?
Yeah, sure.
Resolution to amend Board Policy 2-110 to abbreviate the term of the officers of President, Vice President, and Secretary. Whereas the Board of Education of Community Unit School District Number 201 is legally authorized to, by resolution, establish a policy for the term of office for one year for the offices of Board President, Vice President, and Secretary. And then there's a reference to the Illinois State Code. I don't need to read that, do I? Dana? Whereas at its reorganizational meeting of April 23rd, 2019, the Board of Education elected Marie Charlton as Board President, Joel Price as Board Vice President, and Gary Armstrong as Board Secretary, all for two-year terms as outlined in Board Policy 2-110. And whereas Charlton, Price, and Armstrong are long-serving members of the Board whose current terms as Board members all expire in 2021, and whereas the Board appreciates and thanks Charlton, Price, and Armstrong for their years of leadership on the Board, and whereas so as to ensure continuity of experienced Board leadership into the future, and the Board desires to transition the duties of the Board President, Vice President, and Secretary from Charlton, Price, and Armstrong to other Board members whose terms extend beyond 2021. And whereas the Board determines that this action to amend Board Policy 2-110 is necessary or prudent in order to meet special conditions, namely to align the officer transition plan with the district's fiscal operational year and the superintendent's evaluation cycle, and therefore suspends the requirement in Policy 2-240 necessitating a first reading prior to Board action on a policy revision. And whereas the Board has determined to amend Board Policy 2-110 to abbreviate these officers' two-year terms and change them to one-year terms effective immediately, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of Community Unit School District Number 201, DuPage County, Illinois as follows. Section 1, the Board Policy 2-110 is hereby amended to change the term of the offices of President, Vice President, and Secretary from two years to one year effective immediately. Section 2, the term of the existing officers having been abbreviated and now having expired, the offices of Board President, Vice President, and Secretary are hereby declared vacant and will necessitate a special election to fill those vacancies. Section 3, that this action only impacts the officer positions of Charlton, Price, and Armstrong and does not remove or otherwise impair their positions as elected members of the Board of Education. Section 4, that this resolution shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. So that is the resolution that is before the Board. Are we ready to vote on this?
I am.
A second?
Board Resolution abbreviating current officer terms. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the resolution to amend Board Policy 2-110 to abbreviate the term of the offices of Board President, Vice President, and Secretary as presented.
So moved. Again.
Roll call, please.
This is Stromeyer?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
No.
This is Charlton?
Emphatically, no.
Mr. Armstrong?
Yes.
This is Coil?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Okay, so the next thing we have to do is appointment of President pro tempore to conduct election of new officers.
I would like to nominate Joel Price for that.
Again.
Okay, are there, is there, is there anyone else that would not like to nominate somebody for the President pro tem position? Just want to make sure. Okay, the Chair will entertain a motion to appoint Joel Price as President pro tem to conduct the election of the new board officers.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
This is Stromeyer?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
No.
This is Charlton?
No.
Mr. Armstrong?
Yes.
This is Coil?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Okay. So move forward with the election of officers. I think we should start with nominations. So for the Office of President?
I nominate Joel Price.
Are there any other nominations? Okay, so Kevin, with this particular roll call vote, I think just tally the choice, I guess.
Ms. Wilson?
I'm sorry.
You know what, did we make?
It has to be, does that have to be?
Do we have a motion? The Chair, did I, the Chair will entertain a motion to that Marie or Joel be nominated as the Board of Education President for a one-year term.
So moved.
Second.
Just to clarify, are we voting by a name? Are we saying?
Because there's two.
I heard name.
Yeah, two nominations for the officer position.
Okay, Ms. Wilson?
I'm not clear on this. There's two nominations and you want us to vote?
For name.
For a name?
Which, which person?
Whose name are we voting for?
Marie or Joel?
Oh, okay, I, I was thinking it was going to go on Marie.
This is Charlton?
Marie Charlton.
Mr. Armstrong?
Joel Price.
This is Coil?
Joel Price.
Mr. Price?
Joel Price.
This is Stromeyer?
Joel Price.
Okay, move on to the Office of Vice President, and the Chair will entertain nominations
for that office.
I would like to nominate Laura Coyle as the Vice President.
Are there any additional nominations? The Chair will entertain a motion that Laura Coyle be nominated as Board of Education Vice President for a one-year term.
So moved.
Second.
This is Charlton?
I'm sorry, who's second?
Dana? This is Charlton?
No.
Mr. Armstrong?
Yes.
This is Coil?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
This is Stromeyer?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
The Chair will entertain nominations for the Office of Secretary, Board of Education Secretary.
I nominate Dana Stromeyer.
Are there any additional nominations?
I don't have a nomination, but I have a point of order. The resolution that the Board just passed references that to ensure the continuity that this would be, that would go to the terms to Charlton, Price, and Armstrong, to other Board members whose terms extend beyond 2021. And now the Board has just voted for Joel Price to be President, so I don't know if that's a legal question.
So I actually, I actually did ask Jeff that specific question since John, and he said the language surrounding the Board's intention and purpose does not negate, you know, does not supersede the, the language that alters the policy. So while John's resignation made it a little more ambiguous, ambiguous, you know, for the particular resolution, it, it doesn't really impact the decision-making process.
Did you share this information with the Board, the conversation you had?
I did not.
John, I mean, with, with the attorney?
I did, I did not.
You did not?
Okay. And certainly forward you the email if you would.
No, 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 I'm just.
Or you want me to read it?
I'm just.
His language?
I'm just going by what was in front of the Board for tonight's Board meeting, that's all. That was the only thing we had, so.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You know, as we are reorganizing.
We haven't finished the vote yet, though.
I'm sorry.
We've just, we're.
I'm sorry, you're absolutely right.
The Chair will entertain a motion that Dana Stromeyer be nominated as Board of Education Secretary for a one-year term.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Armstrong?
Yes.
This is Coil?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
This is Stromeyer?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
No.
This is Charlton?
No.
Okay, well, I know that was difficult, and I'm sorry that it was like that, that we couldn't come to an agreement ahead of time and have a very smooth process. I also realize that I'm in this position primarily because we lost a board member as the intention was to transfer all three officer positions to 2021, board members that terms exceed 2021. So we'll be focused on working very closely with Laura. And as time goes on, if Laura's comfortable with it, I have no issue stepping down from the presidency and having Laura assume those responsibilities, but we will wait to see how everything goes with the transition process. You ready to move forward?
Judy, did you want to add something?
Yeah, I just think it's amazing that, you know, we flip from the perfectly competent President to the Vice President, who only runs a meeting when she's not here. If there's other things that you do, please, please educate me on them. And, you know, I, this makes absolutely no sense to me. I, obviously, it's been discussed out of the boardroom. That again isn't transparent, consulting the attorney, and we didn't, I didn't share that, that's not transparent. And as long as we are just doing all officers, I really feel that the delegate, delegate for the IASB also needs to be a newer board member. Gary has been it for 10 years, I think.
No, I've only been on a few.
How many years have you had?
Four years.
Or?
Not even yet.
I think it's time that we hand that over so that when the next meeting comes up a year from now, someone else will be acclimated to what's going on and happening. I don't know if that's a.
Judy, I'm, I'm happy to step down in that role at the next meeting and make it official.
I think everything else is being cleared. I think that is, that would be a good opportunity for a junior board member or maybe someone else coming in after that time.
No problem.
Okay.
Okay, let's move forward. Adoption of, next item on the agenda is the adoption of the 2020-2021 Routine Business Office Resolutions. Do you have anything to add to that?
These are the routine resolutions that we do every year. You know, the banking.
So it's designating the fiscal year, naming the depository of school funds, which is Claretton Hills Bank, authorizing signatures on the bank accounts for the Manning Scholarship at Claretton Hills Bank, signatures on the student activity account, bank accounts, and the student activity funds treasurer, which that will be me, appointing the child nutrition program agent, which is the IMRF representative, which is also me, and then allowing us to have forensic, rattle, intervene in proceedings for the State of Illinois Property Tax Appeal Board.
Any questions on any of that? The Chair will entertain a motion that the regular school, oh, I'm sorry, Chair will entertain a motion to approve the routine 2021 Business Office Resolutions as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
This is Coil?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
This is Stromeyer?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
This is Charlton?
Yes.
Mr. Armstrong?
Yes.
Next item, establishment of Board meeting dates, times, and places. Chair will entertain a motion that the regular meetings of the CUSD 201 Board of Education be held as identified in the notice of schedule of regular meetings of the Board of Education of Community Unit School District 201 as presented.
So moved.
Second.
I, I just wanted to make a note before we voted that the times on the memo are 7:00 and we had previously switched the meeting times to 6:00 to start a closed session before. I wasn't sure if we were changing them back. I just wanted to clarify before we voted.
Or are these just the times of open?
Time that open starts.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, I just wanted to make sure we, I was on the same page.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Stromeyer?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
This is Charlton?
Yes.
Mr. Armstrong?
Yes.
This is Coil?
Yes.
Next item, Superintendent's report.
Just a couple items in my report. One is that next Monday, the 22nd, we'll be distributing boxes of food to, one box per child under 18 years of age, and we'll be at the West Vine Junior High School between 8:00 AM and 10:00 AM. So that's next Monday, June 22nd. And then just to put this on the Board's radar screen, the joint conference, we refer to it as the School Board Conference, typically registration will be open and we
to it as the School Board Conference, typically registration will be open and we'd be asking who would be attending, if you needed a hotel, all those things. Right now, the Illinois Association of School Boards is waiting until July twenty-seventh to open up registration, like everyone else, they're kind of waiting to see what the future brings. But then one of the things that the Board will want to consider in light of Kim's presentation on the budget, there have been some years where the district has paid for Board members to attend the conference, but then hotel expenses, any other expenses, rough individual Board numbers, and so, you know, the Board will need to have conversations about that and how they would like to handle this year's conference. And that's my report.
Okay. Next item, Board Reports.
I have a Board Report. For the past eleven years, I have had the extreme pleasure of serving the community of C U S D Two Oh One as a Board Member, as well as the Board President. I have been entrusted to honor by being elected three times, a trust that I have never forgotten. I recall during my training that we learned that the community entrusts to the Board of Education two of its most valuable assets, its children and its money. I can say with one hundred percent certainty that this has been my guiding vision for every single vote and cause that I undertook. During my tenure, I have been honored to have moved our district forward in so many ways that have never been done before. We took on tough topics and brought about the necessary changes that were needed to make our district the small giants, as Kevin likes to recall to us, that it is now. Over the course of the past eleven years, I have been proud to be part of the following changes. A new Superintendent to lead our district. And I say thank you. To all, all new principals to lead our school buildings. A rigorous curriculum to ensure that our students are challenged. Upgrading and renovating all of our school buildings to make them safe and secure for better learning. Walls and windows at the high school that have been wanted for many years. All-day free kindergarten, years before neighboring districts started. Establishment, establishing an early childhood program for our youngest learners, which has been awarded, awarded the gold circle of quality numerous times. The Board of Education following through on being transparent and televising our Board meetings and inviting community comments. Advanced placement courses, which have provided our high school students a much more rigorous, rigorous curriculum, and has such provided them with college credits. Westmont High School has become one of the best high schools in the country and has been nationally ranked for the past many years. We have a dual-language program, again, before many neighboring districts. We have one-to-one technology for all of our students. And last but not least, I was so proud to accompany our high school team and the Superintendent to Arizona in February to accept the number one national ranking before award, which is one of the highest national awards that a school can receive. These are just some of the changes that were done during these past eleven years. No one runs for office to be popular in the community, but instead vows to listen to the community and then lead the district in instituting of the community wants, vision from the community. When I was running for office for the first time back in two thousand and nine, one of my closest friends told me that she might not always agree with my decisions, but she was confident that before I made any decision, I would fully research all topics as well as get the pulse of the community, and I have never wavered from that commitment. During these past few years, things have become more and more dysfunctional, and the Board of Education has been heading down a path that I can no longer support despite my best intentions. Priorities have changed that no longer align with my values and don't follow the oath of office that I have taken three separate times. Because of this, tonight, I am announcing that I am resigning from the C U S D Two Oh One Board of Education, effective at the end of this meeting. This is one that I have not made lightly, but is the best course of action. I will no longer have my integrity challenged. My decision is not because of the Board's decision to remove Board Officers. However, it, this, tonight, is part of an ill-conceived strategy that I can no longer be a part of. Rearranging the deck chairs just for spite is a horrific decision. There are many far more important topics that continue to be ignored. I am very proud of the work that I have done over the past eleven years. I am very proud of all the achievements that we have been able to achieve for the students in our district. I have been extremely proud to be the Board President for all of these past years. Being on the Board of Education has been one of the hardest, most challenging jobs that I have ever had. Bringing our district to its present high functioning level has not been easy, but it has been one of my proudest achievements. I wish this Board and all future Boards the best of luck to continue to move C U S D Two Oh One forward, and I challenge them to build on the growth of the past eleven years. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that, Marie. I'm, I really am very sorry that you feel the need to resign. I think you would still have a lot to contribute to our, to our Board, and I think it was expressed in other meetings that people would look to you for thoughts and advice on various topics, so I am very sorry about that. I congratulate, I congratulate you on the accomplishments of the district that you have led, or the Board, and I wish you all the best, I really do.
And that's why a mentoring program would have been the best, but the Board has seen it another way, and, you know, I guess it's just time to move on, but I would like to move on with it being more transparent for the public. I would be interested in what the public thinks of this whole meeting, since it has been brought to light, things have been done that weren't exactly above the Board, starting in March, when this whole takeover thing started, not having it in closed session, knowing darn well it wasn't personalized, or personally televised, I'm sorry, and then just moving it from there. So the public has seen, okay, we're going to have this discussion about this, but they have no idea what the transition plan is because the Board does not have one, and this is a wrong action to take. It's already been taken, but when you do not have a written transition plan other than, I'm going to sit here and you're going to sit there, and we're going to do this, that isn't serving the public or the school district or the people that have elected you in this position, and I'm, I'm really sad about this with the resignation. I'm really sad about that. And it's a, you know, it's going to be a travesty for the Board, and I hope that somebody will be willing to do what all Marie has done. I hope that you will post everything on Facebook, every letter, every link. I hope you will answer every question. She does much more than what anybody realizes, even some of the people on the Board, I don't think realize as much as she does, but she's been out there. She'll take a call at eleven o'clock at night, she'll take a call at an airport, it doesn't matter, the school is always number one to her, and she's right on top of it, she's got her pulse on it, and if there's something that comes up over the weekend, she doesn't hesitate to call Kevin, this needs to be diffused, how do you want to do it? She's done so much for the district that I don't believe is even recognized nor noticed, and this is just a bad, sad day. Carry on. Thank you, Judy.
Any other Board Reports? Next item, then, public comment.
During the time when we lost our streams, there were a couple people that let us know, but other than that, there were no other public comments.
Future meetings and events, School Board Meeting, July twenty-first at six PM. I'm guessing it's probably going to be virtual or at South or something.
Yeah, we'll see what guidance we have.
Okay, so next item, closed session, we have a couple items to finish up there. The Chair will entertain a motion to enter closed session to discuss collective bargaining, personnel issues, purchase or lease of property and possible litigation.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
This is Strohmeyer.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson. This is Charlton. Mr. Armstrong. This is Coyle.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.